Evan, is that you for City of Durango?
So. Yeah.
You're gonna do the China Library yet while we're doing it. It'll have a stand up like.
Okay. I'll say that. So yes, that's what I am. That's.
I'm happy that they were pleased with my.
I was on our couch. Yeah.
Oh.
It's not a good song.
It's totally been thirty.
I figured.
Oh, this is like. No, we said, right.
Uh.
Oh, my first.
Yeah.
Oh, we need to, uh, we need to.
Yeah. I saw that point.
That get one of those hours things from the show. So yeah.
We can take all that.
And look at how this being, you know.
It's great. I have a pretty good chance of seeing it. But. I. I remember. Exactly. So.
It was like three. It's like over there. Okay.
Yeah, maybe you're right.
Good. We're good, Mayor.
Um. Oh, I don't think.
I'm gonna throw one.
Oh, we're good. Thank you. Sorry. I'll respond to Mayor. Right. We can go ahead and help meetings order. Uh, we will start with a city council role call just to announce ourselves, but.
Dave Wood. Yes.
Let's see. Mr. Mayor, you're in Durango.
Or Morgan City Attorney.
You'll be out with the city council. Jessica Bule, Durango City Council.
Oh, they lost one city council. Bob, Richard, Lewis, Tony, Kerry, the department directors.
Luke Allen Anderson, library director.
Diane Gersh.
Oh, Aaron Hunter, city manager.
Elliot Benz, budget analyst.
How would women budget analysts? Devin Schmidt, chief financial officer.
Jose Madder will see Madder. Uh, if you all want to, the staff in the back, just to announce yourselves.
Heidi White, founder.
I'm sorry, I didn't do the.
Scott Colley, parks and operations.
Sir, we. That's very patient.
Jessica Golden, deputy director.
I'm playing the janitor.
Great.
Awesome. Uh, so mayor and council are pleased to, uh, provide the city manager's proposed budget for twenty twenty four. And we're talking person. Those budget, but I propose budget for twenty twenty four. Uh, then we will go over, uh, budgets just like we've done in retreats previous years. Uh, the main parts of the presentation will be handled by, uh, Devin. Uh, and also I think, uh, Elliot is gonna have a party as well. The department directors are here just to answer these questions if we do happen to go into that. Uh, but the majority of the presentation in twenty twenty four is our financial review team. And with that, uh, we'll go ahead and get started, Devin.
Great. Thanks, Jose. Uh, so yeah, super excited to present to you all the data city managers, um, twenty twenty four proposed budget. Um, we'll start off with just a general, um, presentation outline. Um, this is, uh, the packet as well as printed out before city council, um, for review. So, um, first off, we're gonna start with the annual comprehensive financial report, um, with Diane Gersh. Um, who might come up handy manager. Um, the reason why we would start with that is, um, the twenty twenty two or twenty twenty two is beginning balances as you're looking at your budgets. So that all comes in from the acter. Um, for the accrual funds that cash basis now this is done and that's included as part of the appendix in the budget process. Um, and so after that, I'll take it over to go over a budget overview. Then we'll roll into the general fund by gold area, um, internal services funds by gold. Elliot will handle that. Um, then we will go into our enterprise funds, capital projects, special revenues, and then our next steps is where we're at. And so with that, I'm gonna walk this remote over to Diane and she's gonna take it away on the comprehensive financial work.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Devin, and good morning, Madam Mayor, councilors. Um, thank you for your time this morning. This portion of this presentational focus on annual comprehensive financial report, governmental statements, and their reconciliations to act for government wide statements. The annual budget is based on our prior year and act for balances and net provisions. Some basics about the acter is that it's required by the governmental accounting standards board for state and local governments and considered best practices. The acter is required to comply with the accounting requirements established by GOSB. There are three independent agency oversights for the CPA Durango's act for handle the Plata County, Durango, the Plata County Airport Act for. Those are our independent CPA firms, the Office of the State Auditor, and GFOA. So all of those agencies, um, have some oversight for our act. GFOA will give recommendations based on their analysis. And one of the state auditor's duties is reviewing local government compliance with local government audit law. The acter is a uniformly standardized document organized in a very specific way. So for example, if you pull up the act first for, right, Ina, California, or Salt Lake City, or the state of Michigan, you'll find it's the same formatted document with very similar information and presented in a very similar way to our.
Let's set it up. I'm sorry. Sorry. Apologize now. There we go. It's really great. Okay, it's hard on you. Okay. So. So this here is in the beginning of the financial section of the acter. And so. On the left, you see the government wide statement and definition of the balance sheet. And then on the right is the governmental balance sheet. So they're, they're at the very beginning, and these are the most summarized statements you're gonna find in the acter. So on the government wide, there's a column on the left for the governmental activities and then the business type activities. The government wide statements show the city with all of the funds combined. They're only separating the consolidated governmental statements and the consolidated business type funds. As you pass the note section of the acter, all the fund statements are summarized by type. And then as you go further into the document, you'll see the statements by individual fund. So you can get as much detail by fund as you can. But at this beginning section of the acter, on the financial section, it's highly summarized. On the governmental balance sheet on the right, it shows a total fund balance. Um. It's down on the bottom right, uh, second of the last. I'm sorry, it's not more readable, but it's forty nine point two million. And the government wide, um, report on the left shows the governmental total net position of two hundred fifty seven point six million. So this difference is due to the governmental funds using the modified accrual method. But the government right on the left uses that full accrual method of accounting. And so that's the focus of the presentation. It's about that different type of accrual basis in the governmental and why we use that. Um, on the next page. The proprietary funds, it's the same. Again, I apologize. It's not larger. You can't see it, but it's a hundred twenty million is the total net position, the government wide proprietary. And also the proprietary fund statements consolidated are also under twenty million. And that's because they're already at that government, um, I'm sorry, they're already at that full accrual method of accounting. So everything is approved for and included in those statements for those funds. Okay, so here we're gonna just talk about the governmental funds and why this modified accrual basis is used. And it has to do with accountability because most of the revenues related to the governmental funds are not related to direct exchange transactions. They're considered non-exchange transactions because of things like grant money and tax revenues. Um, so in the proprietary funds, it's a different type. It's a direct exchange transaction. And so whatever you're paying for, whether it's water or trash service or a ride on a city bus, it's there's that direct exchange. And so we know where the money is coming from and what you're getting in return. But when it comes to governmental funds, we don't have that direct correlation. And so we're required to show more accountability with that modified type of accrual. As public servants, our priority is meeting the informational needs of our citizens and elected representatives, the entrusted public resources that I care. So we need to account for inflows and outflows, spendable resource to, to evaluate near term financial requirements as well as balances in our funds at the end of the year. So the focus is on the government's ability to cover its costs, repay its debt, and provide needed services to citizens for the year.
Might be just a little too.
It's my. Okay, so these are the two main differences. And the proprietary funds on the left, they're already at full accrual. So if you look at the, the statements for the proprietary funds, everything is in there, all the long term debt, the assets. But in the governmental funds, we've got modified basis. And so capital assets are not recognized in the financials for the governmental funds. And so capital assets are not recognized in the financials of the governmental funds. Um, capitalizing the assets in proprietary funds has a net effect on the books. So where they are capitalized, because the proprietary funds, as you know, anything valued over five thousand dollars or having a useful life and having a useful life of over one year is capitalized in the proprietary funds. So any, um, improvements or buildings, um, equipment, it's, it's all going to be out there in the proprietary funds. But in the governmental, they're all expensed as they're paid for in the current year. However, um, for, for example, the library is not part of the asset total in the government's statements. But the transit center building is in the transportation fund statement. So if you drill down the statements, the individual statements, you can see it in there. Okay, so as far as long-term debt, long-term debt is included. So the long-term debt, the bond issuance, uh, for the sewer treatment plant is out there in the sewer fund as a long-term debt. But in the governmental funds, uh, the long-term amounts due for Clarita Road and the library are not included in there. So those are just some of the basic differences. As far as revenues, revenues need a higher level of accountability because they are non-exchange transactions, as I mentioned earlier. Those would be taxes, grants, and donations that have no direct value given in returns. Um, and in the proprietary funds, revenues are recognized or services provided and considered exchange transactions. Though expenses are also recognized when they're incurred in the proprietary funds, but only recognized when the liability is incurred in the governmental ones. So in short, in the proprietary funds, there aren't any reconciliation entries needed to get to that government wide full accrual method of accounting because there are, it's already all in there. But in the governmental funds, we need to show how we got through the governmental, that special type of reporting from informational use to that government wide governmental reporting where it includes everything and gives the state of the city as a whole. So this is a reconciliation for the balance sheet governmental funds that brings it, that top amount is that original forty nine million that was on the governmental balance sheet or statement of net position. And then at the very bottom is the total of the two hundred sixty seven million shown on the government wide statement net position. So these are all the entries within the reconciliation showing those adjustments that are made, made to get from the modified to the full accrual basis of accounting. One of the, the largest adjustments is for capital assets, and that is two hundred twenty million, what is the net amount added after accumulated depreciation. Um, the other large adjustment to the governmental statements is the investment in the joint venture, which is fifty percent of our equity in the airport. So this is the governmental funds, statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So this also requires that same reconciliation. So these reconciliations are in that beginning section of the acter, financial section. So if you had any questions about those, that, that's what these are. And the next page shows, um, the government wide change in net position, and that increased six million from the governmental statement to the governmental on the statement of, on a, um, government wide activities. So, um, the governmental statement reporting with modified accrual gives a state of current financial resources and helps in evaluating near term financing requirements, as well as balances available at the end of the year. This type of reporting gives our auditors, the state auditor, and elected officials and, uh, the public essential financial information needed to evaluate the state of the city to meet current needs while the government wide statements shows the city as a whole. More information on this subject is in the acter notes section, pages forty to forty three. In notes one B to one C regarding basis of presentation, measurement focus, basis of accounting. The purpose of this talk was to give the practical use of that information with the reconciliation entries and why they are needed. And thank you for your time. So, um, again, this is the piece that really connection comes in with the annual number against the financial report and that basis, um, for the budget. And so, um, in your appendix included in the twenty twenty four proposed budget, you can see, um, what that ending net position is and then what entries are either considered or moved, um, on that full accrual basis for, um, these funds to get to that budgetary plan balance beginning number. So thank you so much, Diane, for sharing that. Let us dive into a budget overview. So budget overview, so we're starting off with our budget assumptions. Um, so starting off with, um, sales tax. Um, sales tax, we are showing a projected increase of two percent over the twenty twenty two actual for five percent over the twenty twenty three amended budget. Um, as of August twenty twenty three, sales tax is about four percent higher than the collections at the same time last year and at two point five percent compared to our forecast. So, um, as we're looking at our forecast, our projection, um, is that the twenty twenty three budget was going to be about three percent over the prior year. So we believe that we are on track where we're projecting our sales tax. Um, the city, uh, historically from early twenty twenty one, um, and had tremendous record breaking revenue growth, um, especially in sales tax. However, um, the city is not immune to the broader economic conditions, um, with inflation and the economics economists that are projecting faster sessionary environment to, um, start early in twenty twenty four. CPI is projected to remain at about two point five percent. So that's a factor, that's part of this budget as well. Um, however, with all of that, um, the city leadership and the budget team was able to propose in this budget a three percent cost of living adjustment for our workforce, as well as a hyper former increase, um, for one third of our organization. So an additional two percent that's incorporated into this budget. For revenue assumptions, um, the jungle fund, we're projecting increase at just one percent over twenty twenty three. Um, water and sewer are remaining relatively flat. And then the transportation fund is really contingent upon, um, period agreements that should be forthcoming. We do have in the preceding slides some additional information about, um, where those great contracts came from today. Um, as part of a strategic plan, there is a multi-year strategy to reduce those interfund transfers. And so, um, this is showing that from the twenty nineteen sales charge transfer in the general fund, um, reduced from one point one million to two hundred thousand, reducing the transfer by one point five million over the past three years, and that was part of the strategic plan. So, uh, only two hundred thousand is included in the two thousand thirteen, um, sales tax for the operations maintenance streets. So, um, there's a lot of information on these upcoming slides, and the public will see remarkable accomplishments by our city of Durango team in the strategic handful areas. I won't read all of them for the sake of time, but I'd like to highlight some of the accomplishments in twenty twenty three. So we'll discuss the twenty twenty four considerations in the slide. We dive deeper into, uh, to budget. But some of the accomplishments that are listed on here is completing annual comprehensive financial report on time with one binding. Um, remote work platform upgraded for workforce or productivity and reduce infrastructure costs. Um, staffing, um, the city attorney's office fully, as well as navigating, um, the, um, areas where we had some interim attorneys. Um, the continuation of drafting and reviewing legal documents within four eight hours and ten days for more complex matters. Um, updated agenda format for city council to streamline council meetings and create opportunities for everyone to participate. Um, developed a new community engagement strategy with the connect and engage Durango, which launched last month, and hired a community engagement specialist. The executive leadership team participated in voluntary examiner training, as well as positive intelligence training. Um, we were able to streamline community partnership with the Southern Indian Tribe. Um, the police department, um, did implement a pay and restructuring. And, um, the high deductible addition with the health offerings, HSA and voluntary benefits to help with our self-insurance fund. Continuation of growth momentum learning series in twenty twenty three has been successful, as well as our human resources team launched a healthcare smart consumer series and our continuation of our diversity acting inclusion training. Better affordability and economic opportunity. Um, the biggest piece here, it secured a hundred ninety nine affordable workforce housing units in the following projects that include city incentives. Um, so that would be Highway one sixty west with the four million grant and private activity bond allocation with a hundred and twenty rent, um, a hundred and twenty rent restricted units between that thirty to sixty percent AMI. The twin buttes parcel, um, which created thirty ownership units, um, anticipate development fees offset from the twin buttes transfer fee to create thirty D restricted, um, ownership units between that seventy and a hundred percent AMI. Um, for the apartments, uh, the gauge apartments, um, the animus overlook townhomes. Collectively, those were about twenty four units of availability. Um, opted into proposition one, two, three, additional funding for portable housing, um, was created to create a hundred eighty four units over the next three years. Um, this, uh, group also received a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from DOLA in the innovate portable housing planning grant. Um, gained approval of housing related code amendments pertaining to ADUs and launched ADUs for local three faith program. Track state covered funding opportunities with other entities and submitted applicable programs, which resulted in a one million dollar report for the Best Western and secured a three million dollar, um, grant application for Best Western. In enhanced mobility and sense of place, some twenty twenty three accomplishments include improvements to Pioneer Park, as well as Parks and Intensive Future Need and Settlement was completed. Addition to seven miles of natural service trails and bike, bike specific trails to the city trails within a partnership with the Drains and Mesa Foundation. Addition of forty nine point four two acres of Waters Family Sacred Heart of Jesus. Initiated inventory of the urban forest and community forestry plan. Um, Shiner Park improvements have been started. Designed for irrigation system, um, and replacement for Greenmont Cemetery. Um, improving community health, well-being by promoting a safe community where people can live, work, and play by strengthening community involvement and president's safety with the recreate community engagement team in twenty twenty three. Improvements, um, have been made to motor, as pedestrian bicycle safety and traffic management solutions by reducing injury crashes, um, reduce violent crime, uh, crime cases and exceeded the Colorado average clearance rate in our police force. Implemented effective code enforcement strategies to reduce nuisances, enhance visual awareness, maintain the public order. Um, and code enforcement also added another open space parks and ranger, uh, position in the middle of twenty twenty three. Um, strengthened community involvement with two town hall meetings and quarterly community focus groups with key stakeholders. And, um, uh, implemented a knowledge and training education matrix for sergeant commander, deputy chief of chief positions. In effective infrastructure network, um, the fifty fifty sidewalk program is, um, ready to issue a notice of proceed beginning in October. The stormwater master plan phase three is complete with a prior tag five years CIP. Started the design of the first CIP since twenty sixteen. Thirty second street is, um, currently out for bid. Uh, co-leaded a five years CIP, started a design on the first CIP since twenty sixteen, added water quality and conveyance, north college redesign. Um, completed a setup of new storm, stormwater module and our lucid asset management system. Um, executed new concession agreements for our internal advertising, food and beverage and new gifts concession that are airport. Initiated design of phase one of the landslide parking development. Updated the airport true market study to support ongoing air service development. Completed financial analysis and develop a funding strategy to support phase one B of the terminal expansion project. Inserted electric vehicle charging stations in the airport credit card parking lot. Uh, part with La Pota County to begin, uh, construction of a dock or weather station on our airport property. Um, facilitated private development of four new aircraft hangars. Uh, operated and maintain, um, flow equipment for water quality, pipelines, outlets, and reservoirs. Um, maintained a maximum allotment designated by the Colorado Division of Water Sources. Maintained an accurate inventory of water lines and valves for the city, including material condition and location. Um, identified internal career tracks and associated certifications and moderate. Accurately, um, accurately metered rock residential and commercial potable water. Managed the ground room control connection program, including inventory, management, maintenance, inspections, testing, all of its clients. And moving on to our environmental sustainability and resiliency. Um, council approved the energy performance contract and improvements are now underway across city facilities. Successfully rolled out the Durango's first E by rebate program with grant funding secured through CDOT Office of Innovation Innovative Mobility. Established a sustainability cross-functional team within our city, um, workforce. Completed the installation of four new, um, level two charging stations at the library, uh, which was grant funded, uh, with the Charge to High Colorado programs. Uh, established effective processes for annual recollections alongside community engagement, feedback for the twenty twenty three sustainability action report, and a process established the adoption of the sustainability plan. Completed greenhouse gas inventories and providing sustainability tracking process. Secured state and federal grants for new EV fast charging stations at the transit center. Um, successfully completion of green Durango projects. Supported the four corners office of resource and efficiency for core administration of the green business certification with at least fifteen businesses participating in utilizing city funded rebate. Um, continued to expand the pumpkin and leaf drop off in conjunction with CSU extension office and the market table. And secure beneficial electrification grant through the Colorado Energy Office to fund the HVAC improvements at Harding. Rolled out nearly five hundred bear resistant wildlife containers through grant funded partnerships with Bear Star funded by the Colorado Forest Wildlife CPW. Engaged collaborative governance. Um, there was growth across all social media platforms, including the website reaching one point nine thousand page views in the trailing twelve months. City brand, um, strengthened through aggressive messaging and campaign of branded products for public facing employees. Um, close coordination with local media and covered adult city related news. Incorporated an ADA compliant website personalization option on our city website. And there were numerous public forums sponsored for various departments to increase engagement. Diversity, equity, inclusion, um, the land acknowledgement is underway with the Native American tribes with our diversity, equity, inclusion cross-functional team. Um, live translation, translation services are available in our municipal court. Um, translation services were available at the connect and engage triangle forum, and that will continue to be an offering. Uh, recruiting efforts that align with our community profile have been expanded with our new, um, our new recruitment specialist. Um, internet broadband offerings have been, um, more available. We do have the critical mic technology and transportation. Um, a lot of our reading programs as well are focused on adversity and inclusion. Um, full court, uh, was also planted for texting options to be able to, um, contact those folks. Um, ADA CIP project is underway. Um, Parks and Recreation offered many youth scholarships for, um, uh, folks that could not otherwise afford the programs. Um, this police department implemented the e-citational services. And, um, we continued our diversity, equity, alt day trading in twenty twenty three. So with that, um, I just wanted to provide counsel, um, with our budget calendar. So, um, let's always start off with the strategic plan direction from counsel. And in February, we did have a retreat with counsel going over, um, the funding priorities of the city council, um, as well as, uh, that strategic plan you will see layer all throughout the budget. We are doing budgeting for outcomes again in twenty twenty four. Um, from there, financially works with the departments and the city manager to review the budgets, um, make sure that the revenues available can, um, cover the expenditures that were requested. And today, we're the city council. And today we're the city council budget or wait retreat. Um. So what I would ask of council, the next upcoming slides is that anytime you have a question as we move through the department pages and the fund summary pages, please stop, ask us. Um, we're looking for uh any modifications that council would like. See if we can include a reconciliation. Reconciliation will be on November seventh, with the first reading um on November twenty-first. And second reading on December fifth. So this is our opportunity to connect with council and understand um what council priorities are of any modifications or changes. With that, um we will jump into our combined staffing. Um as we move through the presentation, we will um reflect and show. Um all of the staffing for each department, but just wanted to provide council with the snapshot of. Um what the combined staffing levels are um in the two thousand and twenty-four budget. As I mentioned, um this budget does reflect budgeting by strategic plan goals. So as we move through this presentation, we will um be focusing on what strategic plan goal area. Um each one of these service levels are offered. Um we get to the lodgers tax section. Uh we are um doing something a little bit different where it's kind of constantly you do have some lodgers tax proposals. Um and those are for the council determination um area of lodgers tax. So we put together some budgeting for our proposals so we could. Get an appetite from council to understand um what you would like to see during the determination. So. When we get there, we'll um take some time to go through those proposals, but just wanted um council, the public to be aware of how our budget format is set up. Again, that's here. So as I mentioned, our budget timeline remaining. So today, on the twenty-ninth, we promote the city manager's budget. Um. Through the twenty-ninth, November seventh, we are here to answer answer council questions and provide information as necessary. Um November seventh will be reconciliation. Um November, I think that apologize, that should be twenty-first is the first hearing on the budget. And then the budget will be adopted with two appropriation ordinances. So for our newer counselors. We do adopt a budget um with two ordinances and two resolutions. One is for operating and one is for capital. Um, that was the request of council for us to break that out um in two thousand and twenty-one. And so we have continued to work with that process of having operating and capital separate.
Do you think that is helpful? Breaking it out? In operating and um other fun and other.
I would say if I answer, I mean, it's, I think it's really totally due to council uh per view on that uh from our side. Uh putting them together, uh it's just as fun, I think. Where uh that originated from uh was from the prior council. Where uh there were some C I P projects they didn't agree with. And they didn't want to vote no against the entire budget, so they'd ask to split it between operating and capital. So that was the genesis uh of why that request was happening. So from a staff perspective, uh for us, it really doesn't matter. As long as we can get the budget approved, we need to get by the end of the year. Uh that's more of a council, I think, uh type of preference.
Thanks. So looking at our fund structure, um this track is kind of bridges the gap a little bit with what um Diane Gersh was discussing, but you can see that we have. Um these broken up by either governmental funds or proprietary funds. Your governmental funds are um the ones that have more cash basis where the proprietary funds more businesslike. Um and you can see all the different funds that are included. I did want to highlight um at the request of the user agencies for an item one communication center, that is a separate fund this year. Um as well as um, and I'll try to put it on this slide, as well as the capital equipment replacement fund. Um, we did change that name to the vehicle equipment and service fund, and that's really to reflect better the service aspect that's related to the city fleet. Um while our capital equipment does flow through there as well, so does our maintenance and repairs of all our city fleets. So. Um, another uh reporting chap structure change is that budgeting moved back to financial services from the city manager's office. Ninety-one communications had the new fund and then um council will also see um reflections of services provided versus intermon transfers. So as part of the annual comprehensive financial report. We worked to um put in place where it's more of a services provided versus an intermon transfer. So an intermon transfer. Is um a good example is the transfer that comes from lodgers tax goes to the transportation fund. Um, that's a transfer that is just true in nature where like an example of where we're like services provided is. Anything about our risk management fund, all of our city. And departments utilize that purpose, the workers compensation and property casualties. So that's really a services provided. Um, so we worked with the auditors um in our accounting team to be able to uh put those forward. And so it should be a little bit clearer about the difference between intermon transfers versus services provided. Thanks.
Yeah, a little question. The capital replacement fund. Now the fund started off to set aside money for the replacement of equipment. It just founded through um equivalent depreciation over some time periods or some value. Somewhere along the line. Nine o'clock something that I feel there's a respect to buying. Enterprise funds. That are being diverted into this server and then spent on maybe long enterprise fund related expenses. So. I'm quick, I'll make it a one more general question. Where is what came in the language, what started this funds and what needs the city uh staff. If makes changes to the funds, is it council that makes changes to the structure of this funds? Or the staff, say we changed and now we call it. That replacement. And how do we assure that all the money that has gone into that account? Paid for by enterprise funds or replacement of certain equipments in their enterprise funds. Out of the evidence ends are being used for those specific enterprise ones because this fund has been chopped up in. Three different locations, building building, maybe this fund first of my team. They have nothing to do with.
So I'm gonna work with Devin a bit on this. The first one, your first question, because he asked about over five there, so I'm gonna try to pack it in one by one. Uh, the first one is the surf funds established.
It turned.
Way before I was here. So that fund has been here uh for a while. Uh, we've changed it to a vehicle replacement fund because that's what it is. It's replacing vehicles. Uh, we do have an inventory that Elliot has that can provide to the council that shows every vehicle in every enterprise fund with depreciation and lifespan. And what that equals to what they're gonna want to transfer to. Uh, as far as the council uh proportion of it is by by budget, when you approve it, you approve the fund. Uh, in fact, when you look at the ability for this, uh yeah, I think it provides the council more control. To ensure your depreciation and your vehicles are getting spent if it's all kept in one fund. Uh. Well, I wouldn't do it, but other city managers may or whatnot. Uh you have no control over how those expenses once you budget through at a fund. Having it in a separate fund, I couldn't move out of depreciation and use it for something else unless the council would create it separately and give the authorization to do so. Uh, so it's definitely something that is a best practice. I know we've looked at. There was a study session twelve months ago, maybe six to twelve months ago, where we talked about all the communities, not only in Colorado, but across the country. Uh as well as G F O A that used a surf and use the building maintenance replacement and also use an I T replacement. Uh there are three separate funds, so this number was chopped up. The I T replacement fund and the building replacement fund are two funds that I added on to ensure that we're approaching and providing for that depreciation. Uh, when you looked at I T, uh we weren't replacing our computers on time. So we had tons of computers that were out there that were quite outdated, which at a time with cybersecurity ransomware is very dangerous. Uh, building maintenance fund, we had none of our building maintenance uh set aside. I can look at P D right now and he can tell you. About all the roof leaks and everything that has come through that we're having to pay uh as we go. Instead of being able to have a fund in which we could reach into and pay for maintenance as we go on a regular schedule.
So I was not really looking at the benefit of the fund. I'm looking at an understanding if. Uh, you can just change the fund and the use of the fund on fail, though. Prior councils and city managers have used it differently. But if we go back to intent and the language of the use of this fund. Or the intent. If it needs to be changed, if the change which you were listing probably. Is that something that council has to prove or initiate, or is that completely at the discretion of the city manager?
I didn't change the fund. The fund's always been, I added two more of the funds. That was the I T replacement fund. And the uh building maintenance fund. So the surfer fund, which we're now calling the B D S because it's the equivalent, I have not changed. It is completely doing the same thing that it was doing before I even got here. So that fund has never been changed. The other two funds have been added through the budget appropriation as the councils. Two councils ago approved during the budget, a budget approval.
So the original language of the surf fund basically says what's the equipment replacement, it's service, it's everything under the sun. Then including building maintenance and infrastructure, technology of I T history. Or is there some sort of language that says the surf fund, the way it was set up before we were done? And that was supposed to be funded in this manner and used in this way.
I would know before my time. I would tell you this is what the surf fund has always been of. Uh transfers coming in from those departments based on vehicles that they have. The I T building again renewed, so it has nothing to do with the surf fund and they are two completely different funds. So the language regards to I T replacement building never was funded. So that's never been done until two thousand and twenty-one. Yeah, this two thousand and twenty was my first, no, two thousand and twenty-two, I think, yeah, two thousand and twenty-two.
So I guess I'll stop my, my sure is the same as last year, same beginning that I brought this up. Is we using equipment replacement funds that are associated with pieces of equipment. Funds now after we changed the I T fund, the maintenance funds. For expenses that are not related with equipment replacement, just expanded it, because we added I T and the maintenance. And there was lack of for me transparency on. If we use the enterprise funds that attributed to this in an appropriate manner, so it was associated with enterprise funds.
Yes. We do.
Uh, I'm just gonna find in a row, I just especially from the council, so I remember my first budget retreat and I was like lost and you're probably not. I'm, I was probably just me, but um we've had this discussion probably three or four times. And every time council direction is to continue forward with what cities in Colorado is going to pass the country to. This is back to more transparent because it's setting aside money to fund vehicle replacements. I know these big huge. Expenses that come up every like ten or twenty years that we don't want to take a hit out of our general fund. And so that is what these are used for and it is the way that council has decided to go forward. And one counselor doesn't like it, but we have decided as a council as a whole to keep going forward this way because it is more transparent. And in fact, like changing it to vehicle equipment service, like when I saw that and I was like, that actually makes more sense. Because it is a vehicle replacement and surf was just always so kind of diluted. If that, that's just kind of my way I've understood it over the first few years, but.
All see the chime in. I agree that I, it, to me, it's, uh, the goal is to be more transparent and to put money where it should be for us to replace when needed. It, it, it makes a lot of sense to me.
And Jared last year, if you go back to the budget retreat last year, Jared, uh I think it was Jared, gave a big presentation as to when these stuff started. And how and then after that, it's maybe in November in his study session. Um Jose, just seeing the concern and like me not getting it properly, had a whole staff presentation on why we do this. And so there is like some back. Stuff that has been presented to council a few times.
My capital, we were operating capital fund structure, just.
Sure.
That one is uh was based on the prior council direction, but just to ensure why they're one fund, but they're broken out two different ways.
Yeah, so um through the beginning of this presentation, we'll take counsel through water. Sewer, airport, craft recycle and transportation operating. And then in the later slides, we'll take you through um the capital portion of those funds as well. Um, that was a council request to see those um broken out separately, um so that. As operating changes, there's an ability to see um how the expenditures are trending and revenues are trending versus um having the capital projects. In there as well. They are at the end of the day a combined fund. Um, and so I just wanted to make that note as well as we'll start with operating and then hoping to get to the capital piece will. Recom for that as well.
And for new counselors, that was the direction of council because we were looking at water rates. And changing water rates and wanting to make sure we had changed that just based on capital, we wanted to change it based on. Um operating expenses, so it's sustainable. And so that was why we decided to go that route. Right, am I right? Well, yeah.
Last time we raised water rates was twenty eighteen, right? We look at it for five years.
Uh, we did a water rate modification. Was that last budget year, last year, with the I A B?
So the water rate study did not. But in Justice area, it did not come to fruition. Um what ended up happening was. There was a reduction in two thousand and twenty-two in the water rates and with the water rate study um plan. Um, I don't think, I don't believe that that went past I A B, but. No, uh, yeah. Okay, so um moving on from our changes to those of our structures, um. This is the combined two thousand and twenty-four budget summary, so. Um, I know these are tiny and so we have them printed out for you guys as well. Uh. But this summary page is really looking at what we're projecting our estimated beginning fund balance to be for um two thousand and twenty-four. The revenues or transfers, the total expenditures, the change in fund balance and then that ending fund balance. And then well, you'll see that combined fund balance for the interest funds um that have that separate operating capital.
Yeah, I just wanna confirm firstly, question. Total fund balance across the board is estimated this year or the beginning of two thousand and twenty-four to be a hundred and fifty-six million. So I mean that. And then I look at the revenue, the total of the emissions, total expenditures on this sheet, two hundred and seventy million total expenditures of revenues and transfers. And total expenditures of three hundred and twenty-one. If in your proposed budget, there's a pie chart. And it gives you the citywide revenues and expenditures. And I'll just tell you the approximate number, that is a hundred and seventy-eight million for revenues and total expenses, two hundred and twenty-one. So I think that's the order of management.
Yes, so what this slide is showing is the transfers as well. So if we take a transfer, for example, from water. To paper water capital, you're gonna see that twice.
So if I use those numbers. Two hundred and twenty-eight million, which is citywide. If I add internal transfers, the total would be three hundred and twenty-one uh million. So that means if I'm correct, that we have an additional hundred million dollars of internal transfers. Is that correct? So. One hundred and twenty-eight that shows on the pie chart. Or expenditures compared to this table that shows total expenditures and transfers of three hundred and twenty-one.
Maybe we'd have to. Get into greater detail on that. I'm not sure what it says in hard. Back in the.
What are the questions? Is in the, in the pie chart, which is on page thirty-five of what I think it will be. Digital. I have about a hundred million dollars less for revenues. Of course, it was here, revenues minus transfers.
Should we try to see what is.
Yeah, we should.
And then can we all see that?
Sure.
It's gonna take us there. I think we need to understand where it's going.
Sorry, did you say page thirty-five?
Yeah, yeah, it's four. Yeah, yeah, it's four. Take the, the period.
I mean, I think it's time, we have to wait until we get whatever.
Right, we need to check, I still could.
I'm glad we're still done.
You have a patient.
So if you, if you look at this pie chart, this is citywide issue, which is excluding the internal transfer. And if you add those numbers up, revenues is a hundred million dollars less than the table just showed that includes the internal transfers.
And that's because of the transfers.
We, I mean, yeah, I would say that would likely be within the transfers. I mean, we could, in the past, we have shown council kind of an interfund transfer in the table. So we could certainly provide our defined estimated summary to show that.
This, this, where it's 1993, about 10 million. Need to have around a hundred million dollars internal transfers on the total revenue, which is 177 million. It's problematic and if I, because that is not with transparency, if you're in the strategy. So if me and one counselor, if I look at the street plan and specific financial transparency, performance and transparency, to me, that is a good red cross to have so many internal transfers between funds left and right, who money around. And I would pay this 177 million.
And I would say that my staff is really trying to work towards having services provided in our self insurance fund and our risk management fund, um in all of, in our SURF fund or our vehicle equipment replacement services fund. Um, we're trying to make that change now. So our accounting team has been working really hard to put together that on our general ledger, so that we're able to carry forward that into our budget and show that um more accurately. We're also trying to show EPC contributions, or really trying to define at an object code level what those are. Um, and so um with the budget and the timing of all of that, working through that with the auditors, um, there are still some areas in here where you will see interfund transfers. But by the time that is an adopted budget, um we can show council what all of those areas look like and we can show that as part of our reconciliation. And we could do that prior to all of two council.
Our solution would be to reduce the complexity of the financial structure, reduce the number of funds, because you would use the qualitative, qualitative, qualitative financial report as significantly less costs than fighting costs.
I mean, but that's not best practices and that's not what council's decided. And we talk about this every time we sit down here and know you've decided that's not actually more transparent. It's not transparent. Can you sit here and you're going, that's never here and that's never here to make your like narrative work? It is exhausting, like it, it's, I know it's your job and it's our job too, but you were twisting things and confusing everybody. Yeah, 100%, no, it's not very, you can't even talk to get a touch and answer. Like, I, I'm exhausted trying to like keep up with you to defend what we decided as council.
Well, the other thing to add is the transfers are happening. And so she's combining it here, so it's as transparent as you get. You, you're saying, one counselor, you want us to reduce the funds. But what we've done is tried to increase the funds to make it more transparent, show exactly where these costs are taking place, pulling out the computers from the entire fund so that we can see exactly where those are coming from. So to me, they're working as hard as they can to make as transparent as possible. You are, you know, by, by the way, the fact that they say that in the combined budget, it includes all. And you know, you have to dig down to see it, but this is a very complicated budget. It's extremely complicated. It's gotten much better than when I first started a long time ago. You could barely even begin to understand. But it is, you know, it's, it's, it's a complex, challenging budget. And I think it's difficult for us to take recommendations from someone like yourself. We have to look at the experts who are professionals in governmental accounting. And those, you know, none of us are sitting here as a council. We are not accounting professionals. And we have to look at our auditors and the recommendations they're making and then evaluate accuracy, um transparency at a higher level. I think when you go into these levels, that's why I wanna try to follow you every time it makes statements like this. And it's confusing for everybody to remember you're pulling numbers. And I wanna make sure today that we really understand where you're pulling all your numbers, so even we get into that.
Well, yeah, I understand what you're saying, well, I understood Devon's saying is the hundred million dollars that he's concerned about transfers. Devon's working on a plan to um let us know where those goes, but it's gonna take time. And I remember that this budget gives a big explanation.
I, I completely respect that everybody has a different opinion. I just wanted to point out that we have a hundred million dollars internal transfers for 175 million. For that amount is inappropriate, mind.
At this stage, the, 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 it's, 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 it's.
And um it's also good for every council to know that we actually have um as a council, decided to limit the interfund transfers um and try to like get them down as much as possible, which is why here we have a reduction from 1.1 million to 200,000 from our 2019 sales tax to the ju, to the general fund. Um, and so we're actually working to get that down. And we're done with the same issue, just gonna switch the wording from inter, from transfers to.
So it's gonna depend on the fund. Um, and Diane Virsh is still here as well. Um, we've been working to make this so that it's easier to understand. So if it's the EPC contribution, that's gonna show EPC contribution instead of interfund transfer from one of the other funds. Um, if it is um some of the other like vehicle equipment replacement, it'll be um warehouse contribution. And so we're really trying to show and define what those contributions are. Um, and self insurance, it already has what the actual amount is that's coming from each of the funds into our self insurance fund. Um, and so we're really trying to show that um in a better way. Diane, am I missing anything that we're working on?
Yeah, so we think that we're showing them the revenue that's recognized as a charge for services. And then, so they had these generic interfund transfer descriptions on the GL accounts. And some had this transfer to or, to or from. So, and, and they actually weren't transfers, they're not true transfer allocations that are possible by, by council. They're actually transferred to resources.
We're trying to better reflect with the charge for services, whether it's internal fund or whether it's building maintenance fund, EPC contribution. Um, that does make time, because the system has been set up for a long time. And our accounting team has been working really diligently to step up these different charter accounts, which requires that the journal entries move so that it's easier to show. And then what will show in our annual corporate financial report is that same piece where we're reconciling for interfund transfers, you'll only see truly how to transfer versus serve charges for services, which as Diane mentioned, is really what, how those function and work. Um, the other piece that we're trying to implement in 2023, that we'll see whether we get to proprietary funds, is historically depreciation has been ran through the same account that's expensed. And so on those ones that are already a full basis, the expense just, it washes and it depreciates. So we're setting up an object code that is separate for depreciation, so that those expenses will always live on the general ledger for the public or council or the budget moving forward. So we are really trying to do our best to reflect and show these. And we would be happy, um, my team and the accounting team work together. We put together and send out exactly what we're talking about to council. Um, so you can see this is charges per services, these are truly interfund transfers, um, so that there's a direct tie as we're able to show those pieces out of the account. So we'd be happy to follow on them, I'm not wanting to check that out too.
Because I don't think it's inclusive of those internal transfers within a fund.
Yeah.
Right, so I mean, so it's not like we're transferring from one fund to a different fund. It's like internally, we're saying this is gonna go to this, so far as that, I understand.
So, and so there's a, there's a little bit of both, right? So if you think about, for example, the like self insurance, um, as an employer from the general fund, water fund from the transportation fund, um, we are, we have one whole insurance fund and the other coming in is um service for service. Because what that fund is receiving is service, which is health insurance. Same thing with our risk management fund, um same thing with our building maintenance fund with EPC contribution. Um, there are also instances where we do have um interfund transfers from the 2005, 2015 and the 2019. In our GL, we are naming those as this is the 2005 in parks, open space and trails, transfer into the general fund to cover the cost of maintaining open space. Uh, the 2019 transfer will show, um, this is the cost for street maintenance. And so instead of, as Diane mentioned, having just this interfund transfer blanket, we're really trying to find what those are, um, so that is.
Same, this is specific.
So yeah, so first we have to create the account and then we have to be able to do a journal entry to move what actually happens in the year 2023, so that then it can come into 2024. So there's a lot of moving parts and pieces to this, but we really are trying to be able to show council, public, the auditors, everyone, this is what this is for, um, so that it's clear and it's not confusing about what are these interfund transfers.
It seems like the, the journal entries are writing that clarity, that Mr. Bazos is looking at more, you know. It gives you, gives, to me, like, that makes more sense. I think if there's just one fund or maybe two or three funds, I think it'd be more comfortable because there's so much money in this one fund here. And it's just, it's beginning of where all this money is moving from. So I understand why the need and necessity for keeping things transparent. So like, you remove the tail end, um, but having the journal entries, I think, really helps provide that. Like, this is what this is for, this is why it's being transferred, this is what it's for. I think that's strange. I think, to me, that, that makes a lot of sense to me about what that concern is. It's like, there's these interfund transfers, we don't know where they're going or how they're being managed. Who's deciding what sounds like it's all been a purview, the GFOA, we're allowing that to happen. And then journal entries saying, this is what it's for. So, I, from one counselor, I think it makes a lot of sense. In, in the private business world, this is, it's done on the day of, you know, journal entries are a little trip and gas, but they're necess, they're necessary. Sometimes it doesn't always fit with that at certain periods, be like, oh crap, we had to pay this at careers, but this is why it's fallen on, shall I back to the journal basis?
Yeah, I think when we, we think about the accurate model that relates to the budget, there is a column in there that says services provided or charges for services. Um, and so with that, you'll be able to see in that column, this is charges for service that the government is providing versus an interfund transfer, um, which has its whole separate other note section um that we do with the annual conference financial report. So really, I mean, it definitely takes time. Um, this doesn't overnight, when you're, when you're working on your general ledger, there's a lot of pieces and parts to it. Um, and so that's, that's the other column into it. But again, my team would be happy to um work with their accounting team and bring forward so you can see exactly what we're talking about and how all of that relates.
If you, I mean, that, so I, I agree that they have a short, which is not transition required. Easy example is what capital fund, just more funds. Money from one to the other, though, still gonna be more excellent, quality, more funds. So we'll see part of that million, that they charge, that's just money left behind. And it's all traceable, there's, there's answers for how you're transferring these funds. It's not, in my, how the council will use it, that's fine.
Do you think that you have, um, the transfers that are taken are nice and, are we just turning that right now?
Um, well, I think it just goes back to the ability to track operating capital separately um and then providing the fund at the end, um.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, uh, I think at the end of the day, uh, we have five different counselors that, and public that all see things differently. And as a staff, we're trying to do our best to make it as transparent as possible. Sometimes it looks really transparent to somebody and it doesn't look as transparent to someone else. Someone has their idea of how they want to do it, someone else may have a different idea. Uh, from our side, you know, we're limited in regards to our GL as at currently, uh, and a lot of different ways of having to, to change things. Uh, I think when you look at our financial performance, it is dramatically better than where it was in 2019, 2021. I got here, uh, and a lot of those changes take time. You know, we can't just come in and make wholesale changes and just say, okay, here's how it's gonna be starting tomorrow. Uh, you know, you make sure that you're doing changes as you go through, so that you understand what change you make on the right side doesn't have backward or somebody, uh, in one department's like, yeah, I just told it to shut my finances. And it moves through. I think when you look at some of the things that we're looking at, uh, and just internal financial practices, make sure to get all of our, uh, directors' input on it, because it may affect them in different ways. So it's a, it's a continuous improvement, that's what finance is always going to be. I think that's what you see in, in governments across the countries, they're always looking to improve, how can you do things better? Knowing that there's never going to be this perfect solution that everyone's gonna sit and say, oh, that rings clear to me. Uh, it may ring clear to somebody else and it may not. So we just live on that balance that's gonna continue to trend.
Well, I would echo what you're saying, so this, now I said, but, but true, I've sat through. And I've sat through, uh, you know, other counselors who have said, we are not being transparent enough and we are combining all these transfers in one line and I wanna see the detail. I wanna know what's in it and I wanna break it down between operating and capital. We're doing that now. We have another counselor now who says we're making too many transfers that we don't need to pay. So it's absolutely this balance of five counselors that are constantly changing. And you're constantly, you're gonna get another team uh every year. So um I recognize the difficulty of appeasing and pleasing everybody. We just have to do our best to be as transparent and yet process and play to make the most sense um as possible. And it's also very complicated, so it's interesting, for sure.
Okay, so the cost allocation plan. Um, the cost allocation plan um is the services or internal services provided um by resources, IT, managers, office, attorney, um, and some other departments that support our enterprise funds. Um, so this is the cost allocation that's included in the 2024 proposal. As Jose mentioned, uh, staff did, our finance staff worked with our enterprise and special revenue funds um to determine the appropriate cost allocation for each of these departments. Um, so we were looking at just four different methodologies. Um, charge each department was the lowest of the four methodologies, and so that's what we mentioned for 2024. Um, in 2024 and 2025, um, we'll phase in a period to give all the departments on a free year consultant methodology. So you'd be able to see um whether it's lease or parks and recreation, what the cost of those internal services are to those operating departments. Even though they're not gonna be paying a contribution, we're still gonna show, hey, this is the benefit that these departments are providing to those general fund services. Right, um, so the call, the, what we ended up with is the consultant methodology um to determine the most objective in allocating the cost proportionally in each of the enterprise funds. Um, however, there is an additional expense in some of the departments, so the phase in period is necessary to allow the time for departments to adjust. And so, um, any questions on our cost allocation?
What is the basis for a consultant's base method? What's the, what's the logic behind that structure?
So they look at a couple of different factors in there. Um, and what they do is, um, originally they'll look at, if it's like accounts payable, for example, how many invoices this finance giving or Tony as an enterprise fund. Or if it's human resources, how many recruitment, if it's city attorney's office, how many legal review documents were completed? Um, and factors in, uh, FTEs as well.
Uh, yeah, it, um, so like John said, for every department, it attempts to, um. Allocate how much the department is working for the enterprise fund, depending on the view, I think. Um, yeah, the, the exact, like John said. It's a count, uh, accounts payable is a metric that we use, please, is the metric that we use.
Um. Bids.
Bids, the number of presentations to be counselled. It's all filled up by every internal service. So every internal service is a little bit of a certain metric that we, that we use. Um, in an effort to, uh, subjectively allocate the cost of running that internal service to, to.
In practical terms, I would be saying legal department has the cost really large. And you see the general fund base fifty percent because it's the amount of time, the amount of follow-up, the reviews. And waterfront base, whatever, ten percent because their number of people they give to touch, then it's, there will be less, therefore, is that correct?
Pretty closely, okay.
So look at each internal department, public information office, how many posts are they giving, um, to support that? And so it does look at a couple of different factors in there.
The, you know, three-year ruling average, because obviously sometimes things change. Uh, when your, your department has a whole lot of people review, and next year it may have zero, uh, review. And, uh, it's something that we go over, even we'll get that a lot of discussion, looking at Tony, because Tony's really good at defending, uh, and looking numbers, but going over the enterprise funds and, you know, seeing that number and. Uh, sometimes making, uh, some adjustments to it. Uh, one that I put out is Tony will come back and say, I have my own communications marketing, uh. Team, uh, that I use. So I really don't use the social media sites of, uh, the city. Uh, so then we're like, oh yeah, that's a good point. So then we make adjustments on that portion as well. Like the same thing happens, like, you know, being in a former restaurant group, you know, not all of the restaurants are doing the same amount of volume in revenue per year. But you still have the same marketing team, still have the same accounting team, you still have the same, like, leadership team. So same thing, like, we all have to figure out what is that cost allocation basis, because nobody wants to take on more than their fair share of the abilities against the team helping. So, um, so it's, it's really important that whatever metric, uh, FTE present is probably pretty good benchmark. To be able to figure out where it is, the lion's share or a lesser share of who's, who's needing and covered those resources. And I allocate that for, so, yeah, from the, the private sector, it's a real pain in the rear end trying to figure out. Who's, who gets enough and who's paying their fair share of all of those resources, because it's not just the incumbent of one.
Now, does the, the city itself, like the general fund, what's the, where, as you see here, they have to go on streets, so where is the percentage of the city at all?
And so that's the, um, piece where all of these departments are already general unfunded. Um, and so that's where we're saying, as we move forward, we would really like to be able to show here's how much. Parks and Recreation, for example, is a general unfunded or police, general unfunded, um. Department, what is that? What is their cost to human resources, finance, city manager, state attorney, DIO? Um, and our IT, so we're really trying to be able to show what those costs are amongst. And so that's something that we're going to be working on as we go forward. Um, you'll see, uh, library nine one one in there. Um, library is one that obviously we are not billing to the library. Um, it's just inclusive in there as the library district conversations come about. That's, um, the support we supply for pride and then for nine one one communications. Um, that will likely be a mid-year. Um, you will see reconciling changes after we come with user agencies. Um, but we're really trying to show the reflection and the cost of how much, um, support we provide to nine one one. Um, since we, especially since we've split it out now as a special revenue fund, so that we're able to show those user agencies. The true cost of the nine one one center.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so budgeting by strategic plan goal, we're going to dive into the general fund here. Uh, and so, um, we'll start off with our revenue. So, um, as I mentioned, um, tax and fees are about two percent over the twenty twenty two. Actual and about five percent over the twenty twenty three budget. Year-to-date sales taxes up four percent compared to the election same time last year in August. Um, our team is obviously going to be heading downward on the twenty four budget, but we will have our deadline, uh, August for work up to also by the end of the week. So you can see where we're at here today as well. Um, in miscellaneous, you'll see a fifteen percent reduction and that's based on, on the administrative reduction, um, for the cost allocation plan. As well as the reduction in the interfund transfers from the oh five and fifteen and then nineteen. Um, and then in, in governmental, uh, previously, that's where the user agencies provided their contribution. Uh, so that would be La Plata County, uh, Mayfield Martha's Office, uh, General Fire Protection District. Um, so because dispatch is pulled out with home fund, obviously that would reduce. So, um, you can see for twenty twenty four, um, we are showing, uh, fifty one million, two eighty five, one twenty seven. Um, for our revenues. Our general fund forecast, um, so I was lucky enough to get two folks that have, um. Economics degrees on the budget team, um, Port Louis, so happy to have these two. Um, they've been working really hard to look at some of our forecasts. And so what we're doing based on the projection of the recessionary trends that are coming in twenty four. Student loans being turned back on back on in October, um, four to three to seven percent. Inflation, um, all of those pieces, we felt comfortable going with that middle bound forecast. Um, we didn't want to. So we're, you know, we're still looking at this conservatively, but, um, not at the lowest bound as we could. Um, and so this is our general fund revenues forecast, um, just kind of in graphical format for our team, that's showing that one percent. General fund expense, an entire snapshot. Um, so. We will obviously go into greater detail on all of these preceding slides. Um, but you can see we're showing about fifty three point seven million for our general fund, um. With some larger increases specifically around fire. We paid the fire during a fire protection district contract at the eight point two mils that was voted on for the folks that are in the industry for a competitive contract. Um, with that increased property business, um, they've been almost eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so that's the amount that we have to pay during a fire protection district contract. So that was a larger one on here, um.
With that, counsel, just a quick note, uh, we do have a contract with the Ring of the Bar Protection District that does get into twenty twenty eight. So, uh, nothing today. They start thinking and talking strategy in regards to what that, what that looks like moving forward, because it is a significant expense at times. Uh, not saying anything for anyone listening that are trying to pull out or anything else, but it is a big crucial decision point down in the upcoming, uh, year rather.
Um, and so we'll keep cruising. We're going to go into detail on each one of the days departments preceding slides, so. Um, just looking before we dive into about our summary revenue versus expenditures, so, uh, we are showing those different assigned fund balances. With a projected ending one balance of thirteen point, or sorry, fourteen point four million. Um, so that gives us about a million dollars, um, available after the policy, um, reserves to have a twenty five percent of the fund out, so. Um, general one-time expenditures, so we do like to isolate out what those one-time expenditures are. So this is by department. And showing what some one-time expenditures for consideration in twenty four are.
Um, current backtrack on, uh, summary versus revenue.
Yeah.
And expenses. So you said that, uh, the fund balance on the, uh. Is included in the total, the twenty five percent. Extra, and that's it, that's already in these numbers.
Yeah, so this slide is just depicting what the breakdown is, um, for what's assigned fund balance, restricted, cheaper reserves, other revenue or other reserves. So even for escrow, operating revenue and then that opportunity reserve, um. So that's reflective of that piece. And then you can see the fund balance policy of twenty five percent of expenditure with other cheap, make four million. That's, um, based on the fund down policy.
One, maybe?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Good.
That was a big step. Um, now determining what that fund balance percentage is.
Um, and so with these one-time expenditures, again, these are non-recurring, um, so these are either about one-time projects or one-time, um. Yeah, really one-time projects. We just wanted to be able to show nicely what those are by department, with general fund. So diving into our budgets by whole area, obviously city council is at, um, the highest area. So, um, all of the areas are considered moving at city council, uh, it's your strategic plan. And so, um, this is really showing, um, a, a pretty, uh, flat budget. Um, with the charges and services, personnel, materials and supplies, um, a lot of the charges and services that are used in membership bonus that, uh, council has in the budget. Um, so just wanted to make that note as well. So diving into financial excellence and record for the government in the general fund, which are the city manager's office. And so city manager's office, um. You'll see that personnel, uh, does reflect a decrease with moving three, um, positions from a budget to findings. And then adding community engagement specialists in twenty twenty three. Um, so that's the, um, reflection of that change there. In twenty twenty four, the strategic plan considerations are going to be on the city civic center, complex and funding. As well as, um, I'm really looking forward to refresh of the city of Drango strategic plan, so.
I was hoping you were. It's twenty twenty four, thanks.
Yeah. In our city attorney's office, um, you will see, um, the charges and servicing. So we are, have an increase in there to implement Tyler technologies. Of course, Mark's heart walked out when he's up, but, um. We are looking for an update to the function of the municipal court and prosecution filing systems. Um, you'll see a decrease in consultants for the airport, outside counsel for district court cases. And Board of Ethics Manor, and then you'll see an increase for executive assistant for the city council's office, um, to adjust to a full-time city attorney's office for the increased needs. Um, you'll see an increase as well for the required training materials for the C O B requirements. And then what they're focusing on in twenty twenty four is to provide timely, accurate legal review, draft a legal review. Um, they've started an open work policy, so they're going to continue that to assist people in legal matters. Um, they're going to continue their training and educating new staff to ensure compliance with the evolving legal matters and update any changes to the Colorado statutes. Um, implement procedures and software systems to facilitate better communications between municipal court and prosecutions. That's what that, um, Tyler technology software is. And then upgrade new programs that better associate legal document preparation.
Yeah, I'll just say, counsel, on this one, a, a big, uh, baby assistance in the increase in this budget with the personnel and adding that, uh. Sometimes I look at it and I wonder how the government did it for so many years of, I have self, but having the, the expanded operational, uh, capabilities has been amazing courtesy stuff.
Human resources, um, so in human resources, um, we are shifting, um, payroll over to our human resources department. Um, that's currently house of finance. That will give us an opportunity for our employees to have kind of a one-shot shop for all states-related benefits pay. Um, everything in there. So that is a shift that we're moving from finance to human resources. Um, charges and services, there's recruiter seat, um, on the following platforms, so indeed LinkedIn and other social media platforms. Um, that'll give us the opportunity to have great recruitment, um, really get the city brand out there and employer choice. And then, um, in addition to perform a yoga, it's management tool, so that's taking all of our performance management into one system. Where we're on from the time we onboard employee while they're here at the city, so that, um, it's a good efficiency for our team as well. And then in twenty twenty four, we will do the employee engagement survey again, so that also another increase in human resources. So again, they're going to be doing that survey twenty four. We are going to move our benefit plan to a seven-one start. And the reason for that is you'll see when we get to self-insurance, we don't have our whole numbers yet from our benefits provider. And so moving to a seven-one enrollment will allow us to not have our insurance and our, um, health benefits. Be in the same year that we're trying to group the budget. So right now it's, it's difficult because we don't have all our claims history. So for them to be able to say, hey, here's your rule for your benefits is challenging. So, um, what will happen is this year we will do our enrollment and then we'll do open enrollment again in July, so that we can change that thing here. So that, um, it's easier, uh, budgeting preferences for folks and we're able to really hone in on that.
And better for our employees.
Yeah.
Uh, because when you look at, we get a final number in October, the council thinks about to approve the budget that we went in December. It gives us about thirty days where we have to open and roll all of our employees and communicate all the changes we're having in our health plans. And I know for employees, that, that's a lot to try to have to dissect and go and pick those what's best for their, uh, their families. So being able to move it to a seven-one allows us to have more time to know that what are the changes coming out and have more of an ability to communicate those. So it's not so rushed, uh, for that aware of what it's for. So it works best for us, but I also want to highlight that it really does work better for our employees. So they have time to consider what's going in, us getting, letting them know where the change is coming through. So, uh, I think it's really good to have partnerships with. As well as helps us with the act or keeping on time on that. So that's putting things in being on December thirty first, uh, budget, self-help insurance and trying to close out the year.
Thank you for the invitation. Um, and then HR will also be offering their continuous mental first aid, um, for, for staff. And then, um, any health plan design changes that we need to update for. Finance.
Don't be so useful judge is not in the attorney's office, it's in.
It's in, you work. Yeah. Uh, so in finance, again, uh, we are showing that we moved three budget FTEs into finance. We shifted our payroll position, full-time position over to human resources. Um, we did restructure to the, the department, so having a flatter structure, not replacing assistant finance director or other positions that are not needed at this time are also, um, consideration for this. And then, um, consulting services related to acter completion, you'll see a minus there. Uh, we're doing more of that in-house with our staff. Uh, with our restructure. And so, um, overall, the finance department came down, um, in the total amount. So what we will be focusing on in twenty four is completing, um, any fund balance policies, um, pivoting to a full budgeting for outcomes model, which you'll see. A little bit of that with the lodgers tax, um, you know, council's supportive of us moving to that model. Uh, purchasing policy rewrite, re- right, working the attorney's office on that. Um, we are continuing streamlined processes for our sales tax, um, so working with our businesses to determine the best way to collect that sales tax. Um, we're working to streamline our, uh, P card policy and our accounts payable. As well as complete the annual comprehensive financial report on time with no material findings since our, uh, our. Customer service, um, our customer service division is maintaining the current, uh, current service levels. Um, some considerations under financial excellence, my performance governance, development and rezoning of utility account routes. Um, examination and implementation of, um, completing missing account details related to prior data exports. And then outreach and promotional collaboration of available and new sustainability practices for customer organizations. So, um, pretty flat on our customer service division. In information technology, um, there is a charging and services, uh, there's an addition to be able to complete it as the team heads from. Um, there is an addition in there for enterprise resource planning consulting, um, costs. And so what that is, we're looking at is working with the Government Finance Officers Association. To look at all of our processes, look at all of our systems and determine what would be a good system moving forward for the city of Drango. For our entire ERP. So that's obviously one I'm super excited about. Um, GFOA will help us implement all of our best practices as we're looking at our financial systems. But they will also look and see, um, areas where it integrates correctly in different places there as well. So. Um, software upgrades, there's an addition to the budget to support departments with unforeseen software upgrades, uh, core server visualization upgrades. Solting and higher system performance and higher licensing costs. Uh, phone system migration will also maybe be straddled an additional year or maintain a smooth transition. So that's looking at transitioning off, uh, off of the desktop over to. The desktop over to teams phones, or using teams as our primary phone, um, so that's kind of a neat efficiency that our IT department has put together. In twenty twenty-four, um, they will look for phone system migration off of. The VoIP system and, and over to Microsoft Teams, they'll continue the audiovisual technologies. Um, again, explore the current ERP systems, continue IT annual surveys, hone in on feedback, and then continue monitoring systems, keeping the systems at ninety-nine percent uptime. Okay, so moving on to affordability and economic opportunity in our general fund, we have development services. Development services, um, so there is gonna be a personal change related to attrition, um, charges and services, this is inclusive of new software. To accommodate customer service with better efficiencies in our development services group, um, so those are the, the changes that relates to um, their budget. In twenty twenty-four, um, they're gonna be looking at enhanced customer service through their software-based services. Um, code enforcement programs, and so really those improvements with a focus on engagement, education and improved compliance. Um, with unpermitted signs, which will be a noticeable, noticeable accomplishment in twenty-three and will be a priority in twenty twenty-four. Uh, provide quality service and experience to the department's transition to a new office space, moving over to the big picture building. Um, continuing to work Laquada County, Laquada County Economic Development Alliance on both. Road property owners on desired future land uses, annexation, allocation of funding and the infrastructure and design of water sewer. Um, they oversaw the development process for three springs and twin-use master plan developments. Advance the vision of Drango Mesa Park, including the annexations, that was kind of a twenty-three. Consideration, but they'll continue to work through that master plan in phase one with public mandates um, come to fruition. And then supported workforce housing initiatives and partnership with the Housing Innovation Division is one that they will continue. And a newly hired code reform administrator, and that is a dedicated staff person to engage the public and advance code amendments and address community priorities, so. That will continue in twenty twenty-four. Economic opportunity, um, again, some changes related to attrition on personnel. Also, the, the software piece um, is being split between those two departments. Um, and so that's the changes that you'll see in their twenty-four budget, um, so they are looking to. Support implementation and community-based investments and fund um. To continue that, they want to be the one-stop-shop approach for business needs and assistance on city facilities. Uh, complete the sunsetting of the C E C and finalize the role responsibilities during both periods of districts as a focus for twenty-four. Um, continue to strengthen our departmental relationships, uh, install new public art and. As well as create an easier, more straightforward process for permitting around food trucks in Drango. Um, and then update long-range plans, including character districts, comp plan to help guide development. They're gonna continue to bolster our public outreach and community engagement with a goal of expanding um, experience economy sector in the Drango region. Moving on to enhance the ability and sense of place, we'll start off with parks and recreation, or parks first and then recreation. So in parks, um, they are introducing a full-time shared positioning collaboration with provisions of Parks and Recreation Department to increase capacity and efficiency. In twenty twenty-four, they plan to replace the lighting and lifts in Chapman Hill ski area, complete the Schneider park improvement, uh, complete construction of the Annemus River Trail, Sangre de Albertson's. And continue to work with the Drango Mesa Park Foundation on initiating development and infrastructure phase one of the bike park. Um, in recreation, again, um, so the addition of the one-time position to provide a higher level of uh, consistency in customer service. The quality of programs, facilities, um, continue to provide and expand the quality of services and reportable price um, in our recreation department. Ensure facilities are clean, maintained with high level of standards, increase the outreach and customer satisfaction to include facilities. Um, and then also looking to increase the scholarship fund by reaching out to the community. In need, as well as continuing the fundraising events for scholarship funds, so for folks that couldn't otherwise participate and are using um, programs. Uh, work with the community on re-authorized the two thousand five sales tax to continue to provide options for lumbering maintenance of parks, migration facilities and developing facilities. Police, um, so in police, uh, the personnel is looking to add an administrative manager. Um, the strategy and the goals are really to reduce the cost and increase um, service by the civilian certified law enforcement positions. Within the organization, um, in charges and services, so this is where you'll see an increase in that because now we are building um, the police department. For the contribution to the nine-one-one communication centers, so those are based on. Um, the amount of, a three-year rolling of the amount of calls that each um, agency dispatches out of nine-one-one, um, so that's, that's a large uh, component there. And then um, PD will be paying for um. Yeah, that's, that's the high, the, we are the highest user agency for fifty-one percent of that, so. In twenty twenty-four, um, through partnerships, the police department and strategy will. Continue to reduce crashes, violence, and property nuisance crimes, increase trust between the community and the police, encourage positive interactions with coffee, but the cop type program. Membership of officers of various community boards, supportive of public meetings, increase efficiencies and staff focus on education, retention and wellness. Um, a plan and budget to provide the capacity and investment needed to fulfill their vision and achieve their goals and code enforcement. Um, to continue with those open space rangers initiative to actually sustain well-being in our community.
Chief, could you just touch upon really quickly uh, that administrative manager position? Because I don't want it to get lost in what that actually does by have keeping a uniform uh, out on the streets instead of in the office.
Absolutely, thank you, Sam. Um, so what we're trying to do is we're trying to continue to streamline organizations, because traditionally, our department and organizations that police officers, people in the facility are technical. We're trying to get more of our police officer back on the street, so right now, we're looking at pretty much complete new organizations in the department. Because of some of the new basements out over the last two years with our police officers, technicians, our open space rangers and such. We're trying to get more technicians to another cop to us, and so what visual is, it actually gets one of our police commanders, certified officer. Back to our organizational structure to actually do police work versus administrative. So it's bringing in a dedicated manager to oversee our property room, our recruiting numbers, our managers, um, other digital present technologies and such like that. In order to make sure that those things are, because we don't necessarily need a officer to drop. Uh, and that's why we don't necessarily have a whole sort of case to do, so just create more efficiencies in the fact that.
Chief, you tend to say, um, Harry, then the organization took a position or created some.
Well, we're gonna do outside inside testing, uh, and we'll select the best candidate.
Okay, fire administration, so we touched a little bit on this, um, obviously with the increase in property evaluations. Um, we are showing that almost seven hundred and ninety-eight or almost eight hundred thousand dollar increase to our fire contract. There is a bill um, for the Senate, I believe, called uh, Prop H H, which could affect how um, much property tax. Um, the fire district does receive, and that could therefore potentially change success valuations for us as well, so. Um, more to come on that, we won't have a final um, assessment until first week of December, so. That'll be one of the pieces the council also approves, is that no levy assessment, um, it will be expected to receive from the county on that contribution. Library services, um, so personnel created multiple promotional opportunities in alignment with employee survey results, um. Materials applied, so books and materials are higher due to supply chain delay and um, higher inflationary pressures. In twenty twenty-four, the library folks will be focusing on monitoring the joint sales tax fund against financial analysis of the Drango Public Library. As well as working with senior leaders on the issues committed in formerly pursue a library district of valid initiative. Municipal court, um, so councilor Whitaker, if those, um, where if there was an appetite of council to have. The judge be a non-contracted employee, that would increase by approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, charges and services as the other piece of the software in order to streamline the electronic records retention and be necessary work. Um, entitled full coordination software and on-base retention, um, but charges and services would decrease by about a hundred K um, to rid with the judge who's not contracted. So.
So that very. To be thirty thousand more to everyone, we'll get judges versus two contract protect judges.
Yeah. Yes, so if that was something council wanted to have to consider, um, it's not, I mean, it's in the budget as hard as we would leave the increase by about thirty thousand dollars, so. Um, for the future plan considerations, expansion of attorney pool of multiple dependents.
Camera, sorry, just if council does apply action on that, uh, I would suggest. Maybe at the next council meeting, uh, to provide direction for the business for the city manager to include a full-time judge in the municipal court. Or she just wanna make sure when I have the partner, how would we do it if we wanted to, how would be the part to direct us to be placed in the budget? Current contracts.
Why, why they're coming, ask, why is it thirty thousand more for one full-time versus two part-time?
I guess it'd be insurance, health insurance retirement, insurance, because if contract is just flat, yeah, it'll get uh, the insurance side with.
Or.
Yeah, return.
So you have an added, here we have.
You'd have to add, it would increase the budget thirty thousand, it would be something that we could do within the budget and still keep everything that's been proposed through it, um, you can just. Be the direction as that's a council, we think, from our council, we place that in at a council.
That's assuming the current salary has benefits, right? I think they benchmarked it, didn't.
Yeah, this was um, based on some analysis that a manager came provided to us, so um, took it in testament, um, it has not gone to human resources yet for. Their official grading, but.
I see. Full-time judge, jurisdiction, close to here, it was significantly less of a base salary. I can be as.
Well, I think we just ended up going off the higher bound, um, just to be. Oh, um, human resources could agree that position, I am on it for work.
I'm wondering if it would be helpful.
So they were suggesting, we'll have the discussion. The next council meeting take one more and add it. The very end, you just had the graphic right information, which you got, now you have that information.
So we potentially talk about, that be a study session, kind of a session, or, or a presentation, like, how would it be interesting to see it?
I mean, that's. I could place it on the agenda uh, for discussion, if that's what the council would like, it would be on it, it has to have that discussion.
Right, and if, you know, we can name directions now, right, it's my meeting, so if there was something supportive place, I would generally could do that, we're just waiting, I mean.
We're not hearing, there's a limited amount of study session time until the end of the year, so.
Yeah, I mean, right, if I, if y'all want to, I'd rather have it on this next agenda. So, so that we could have on the budget or come back and follow up, so if there's.
Yeah.
Direction to say we'd like to discuss this and place it on an agenda, so I can do that for the next meeting, I need to make sure, let's see if there's. Three or more of those, have that, so.
So if you follow that, based on information provided so far, as I understand, the administration's providing good information about the distinction between the two. You need a motion at the next council meeting to take some type of action, whether that is to go full-time um, or to not. And when you're having that, then you have that discussion happening based on information you could provide already. This will fall in the reconciliation aspect of the budget.
We're gonna put that in, yeah, if, if, if that's where.
I'd like to have that discussion, council.
I think it would have a discussion.
Yeah, right.
I will tell you that, um, we did have a meeting with the current judges a week ago, and they are unaware that this is. In the pipeline, so. I'm happy to call them, or maybe someone, someone needs to tell them that this is gonna be on the agenda, because they could be brought by surprise, because they did not mention the meeting. Last week, and I didn't do like, just bring it up.
I, I was my comment, but I was, because I think. To be, well, current judges would change.
We might be changing things, I actually don't know, I mean, I know it's just, what does this apply?
But we're, we're making changes, we're discussing changes without even having spoken to the official work in that position. To do work, so. But the reason why we're discussing would be beneficial to at least clarify that. But that all processes may be very difficult, of course, whatever. Uh, I just rather, I, I personally, I wouldn't wanna hear their feedback per se, I'd rather be like, hey, this is what we're discussing, um. This is what we're looking at, um, maybe, maybe one of her likes to feedback, they can, but I.
We have feedback in the appointee um, meetings, and that's why we're going this round, because during our appointee. Um, what's it called, evaluation, do you think you could, uh, we feel like this is, uh, about to get one creation. And those. And we have a.
That is next.
To the next, the next.
And if we could get, um, does Sarah know about, we assigned the information that we sent you.
I have it, she does.
See you.
If we could include that information, want the pros and cons in the agenda doc from staff, that'd be helpful.
And like, this is one of the reasons why we're doing the agenda, include your directive at the council meetings in public. For everyone to see, I was a bit surprised that they didn't mention it, I'm aware of that, that's not my view, because you did everything probably to let it expose.
Right.
Um, just one other note on the library, as we discussed in the joint sales tax meeting, um, this is eighty thousand dollars less. Than what we're expecting to receive in, how we build that.
More.
I mean, the other.
I just wanted to check what, what was the conclusion of the discussion.
There will need to be some action at the next council meeting.
So it would be on the agenda, but, but that was the question, it's going to, it's important, I said, I would personally like to hear from the judges throughout during that, and. It's, this, uh, except she, or not, you said one, you said, you don't hear from that, although, I mean. I, I, sometimes I make out. So that was the, the, my rationale, you know, uh, the conclusion, um. So, yeah, I guess, would there be, like, if it's on the agenda, would there be like a small presentation? I, I mean, I guess I'm trying, my partner would be, if there's something agenda, just put a pros and cons document in his ass, put an agenda packet and at the council.
Go in the direction.
So the judges are on contract, right? Okay, so we're the employer, so we're telling them how it's gonna be with the rest of the cell works.
Good for the apple state, we, plus that's one of our other entities.
What the contract ends just, so you have an obligation as a council to. Take some decisions on how you want more of us that that contract inspires, I think there's only one contract.
One contract, oh, sure, yeah. So as part of that contract, is there an hours requirement, is it, is it, is it, assuming it's four hours a week?
It's just, it's pretty simple, straightforward, so. You can hear her these four times, it's not that simple. But they have to have the authority to set the times that they choose. I, I apologize, I have the contract in front of me, I reviewed it maybe a month ago, it's, it's just pretty boilerplate generic.
Is it, is it pretty industry standard across the, this probably has. No specificity.
From what I've seen, and I have to, read the fan reviews here, she's the one who's done lots of that, um. Uh, it's done in different, different jurisdictions, it is unusual to. Uh, it's done in different, different jurisdictions, it is unusual to do it the way that we're doing it, with the size that we are and the volume that we have. In what way? Um. We're doing it three days a week, um, for very limited hours, some jurisdictions do it last days a week or longer hours. Um, and. There's no real lot of, um, it's kind of how you guys want it to work and what the judges are willing to do. I know, you know, in Portlands County, there is a single judge who is putting in a significant amount. Significantly larger amount of hours than we're scheduled to work here, but I haven't, I haven't gone to serve that court, I can't. Happy to look at it and have more to talk about.
That's great. I think there's counsel.
On the.
Just put it on the agenda.
Okay, yeah.
So then it's been taken.
No, then you.
You didn't say that, what?
Is it okay? Is it okay for them to think you've put that on the agenda?
Yeah.
So.
Be it.
Great.
Um, so yes, library is eighty thousand dollars over joint sales taxes, that's made general funds, so pick up that piece. Um, so just want to count beware, um, you know, at the slash joint meeting with the board of commissioners, it's the discussion topic, so. Um, that was one note that I wanted to share as well with library. Okay, um, environmental sustainability, environmental sustainability, resiliency, general fund area, so snow and ice and street cleaning, um. So, um. You'll see personnel is reflective of opposition requests, um, and then under their considerations for twenty twenty-four, they're going to be working on sign main installation, street cleaning. Centerline painting, um, they're going to be doing curb parking, stall painting in the central business district. Refill removal is always full crossing and light maintenance, as well as twenty-four hour, um, snowplow and maintain the seventy-eight lane. Uh, miles of roads and alleys in the city. Okay. So. Engineering, so we're moving on to effective infrastructure network. Um, so, infrastructure network, we're starting off with engineering, um, you'll see an increase in our cost for, um. Uniforms have been going up, so that's reflective of that. Um, other supplies is the cost for the water maintenance, um. An increase for the twenty thirty update, um, and so this update is looking to amend. The plan for major roads that have been completed, since the original plan was complete in two thousand six. Um, so only a minor update was completed about eight years ago, and major streets have changed since then to include great road expansion, Wilson Bowl, Chaska Monte. A portion of La Pocia, um, additionally, there's some anticipated improvements in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, such as Sky Road two fifty, two fifty-one, and Duran Mesa. Um, that will be outdated from the original plan, so this update will also affect the potential major street impact fees. Um, that are eligible for certain developments, so those are the impact fees. Uh, or there's also an increase, um, for manuals and some items there. So twenty twenty-four, um, they're going to be looking to implement under their effective infrastructure network, uh, sidewalk district. Continue to look at different funding mechanisms, as well as initiate the next C A E for the five-year C A E plan, capital permit plan. Complete the thirty-second street extended detention basin. Uh, continue to support, uh, production of a variety of housing types. Uh, the partnerships that will close the road through Rampantha, through Springs, continue working with community development and developers to efficiency and development review processes. Um, engineering and standards, construction specifications updates will occur, and then implementation of the M S four permit within the state. In the capital projects division, um, there's an increase related to adding, um, professional development and travel. So training costs that was previously charged to other contracted services, vehicle ride maintenance, so this is adding budgets to cover. Uh, B E S for vehicles acquired in twenty twenty-three, or hopefully, the ability to acquire. Um, purchase of additional inspection tools, purchasing two trucks in twenty twenty-three, plus requesting two retired vehicles from another division. Um, other contracted services, um, the establishment of, um. Their program that they're working on, training costs, purchasing computers, as well as furniture for staff in twenty twenty-four. They will be working to continue to refine operating procedures for professional and consistent construction project management, uh, for the lessons learned in the, uh, early stages of the division. Um, supporting various departments with their C I P projects, and then, uh, leading design and bidding larger projects in one year with construction plan for the following year. Um, this is to encourage that more contractors are involved in bidding and construction of projects, as well as providing material orders for contractors and new projects. Streets maintenance, um, there is an addition for thermal application machine. Um, as well as continue to get full staff capacity in twenty twenty-four. And twenty twenty-four, uh, for effective infrastructure network, they will be working on street preservation and maintenance through alcohol patching, concrete repair. Continue alleyway maintenance, street sign installations, um, street park maintenance to include that centerline pain. Ensure safety through maintenance conducted through safety zones, and then, um. Just maintaining the seventy-eight centerline miles of road and alleyways for the city. Buildings and plants, um, there is an increase in the capital purchase line item related to police facility upgrades for, um, doing spray coating, um. Desperately needed at our police facility, um, in twenty-four, uh, continue to develop facility evaluations to meet the needs of our workforces. Um, research projects in the downtown business district for transport amenities, leverage and access management software to measure and improve our planned. Maintenance programs for all of our facilities, and, um. Studying electricity and gas consumption for buildings from a baseline, um, for efficiency and use reductions. General fund engage collaborative governance, um, so city clerk's office will, uh, be purchasing that software for municipal porch. Um, compliant that will allow access for prosecutor and defense attorneys, um, streamline payment notifications for citizens. Um, as well as alternative defense coalition for enhancing court certified interpreters. Um, reducing, in twenty twenty-four, they're going to hook on reducing paper and streamlining work for work flow in the municipal court, and then, um, training for elevated license clerk to a deputy clerk position.
Can I just say that that in my world is probably the best, it's that if you guys. If they're taking a court, it's kind of stuck in the set of things, we'll cop copy papers and everything else, maybe get out to the rest of the country where. You can actually get a speeding ticket and then pay it on your phone, you know, for a few days, whatever. It also brings this in compliance with state law and, um, federal law about, um. Transparency, visibility, access, everything that needs to be done to run that court. In a much better way than it has been, the price tag, considering what we're getting, is not, in my mind, that big. Uh, really going to be much user friendly for people, attorneys, um, and the judges.
Thanks, Mark, so moving on to public information office, the division of city manager's office, um, so the changes in budget is switching for booth suite, social media posting, platform scrap. So it'll cost approximately ten thousand dollars in funding, but it'll provide better analytic tools. That will allow us for us to get our target messaging for particular audience through the appropriate channels. Um, in twenty twenty-four, they're going to focus on a redesign of the city website, um, to acquire meet the demands of eighty-eight compliance. Expand use of the public engagement platform that connects Engage or continue to, um, utilize that tool. And collaborate with the new community engagement specialists on outreach methodologies, and the new marketing specialist position with resources. Finally, non-departmental, um, so council may see some changes here in reconciliation as it relates to our risk management fund, um. For our workers' compensation and property scheduling, this is the area of where those, um. Here, where the charges for services is attributed out of with the general fund. Um, so, uh, right now, uh, we have that budgeted, um, at almost flat, but you can see that there could be a potential for. Some changes there, this is also where we do that transfer to the capital projects fund, so those are all general fund funded projects, so, um. That's the, uh, kind of the non-departmental piece here. Oops, and then community. Community support services, so council, the last study session got to hear about all the community support services, um, the city provides, that's our animal control contract, or core contract. Detox, um, auto use services, our food rebate, rebate refund program. Um, and with that, we did include, um, that car, right, I'm going to show the twenty twenty-four request of those agencies. And then you can see what's in that twenty twenty-four budget, um, so, uh, we did have a large request from our animal shelter and our animal control contract, um. That was not included in this twenty-four budget, um. The city and the county does, um, contribute and covers the cost of the nine-one-one calls. Um, for our animal control contract, um, so that is kind of an in kinder, um, option that we do provide for those folks, um. But there was a request to see them side by side, what's the budget versus what the user agencies that requested.
Feedback, we stop extending. Later. That's one council which.
Okay.
I. Think this is a little. On one side, I really like to support all these organizations. To the extent we can, I believe to the extent they're asking for funds. Uh. Where I'm a little bit concerned is that some of the entities that. Uh, some of the entities as after funds also go after funds through. Whether it's our law grants, or whether it's United Way, or whether it's, uh, the merger stacks, or whether it's the bid. So some of the entities that request funds for sport. Uh, trying to tap into those sources, or it makes sense, but it's not necessarily transparent, we look at it as council, what they're asking. So is it possible, first of all, to clarify, is it asking, and secondly, I'd like to see, for example, in my society. Uh, shelter for the. Same for the. The, the soil community guard, they ask for more, I'd like to help them, because these entities have projects and needs. And they can spend, use those funds directly, and then they're running.
Um, soil is a different, they haven't even, we haven't gotten their full request yet, well, there was.
So there's eighty thousand dollars additional included in the first budget, um, and that's for transitioning the. Further to.
Yeah, or near Amberville.
Right.
And we have that.
That's was included in that property.
We just didn't, um, they're going to go a different route with the film first versus the other thing, because we're not really funding that right now, that's great. Um, one counselor, there, I think, um, it is, like, Councilor Bosman was saying really hard, like, not having their full financial statements, and like, what am I covering? You know, did you overspend on your construction project, and that's why you need more money, or, you know, it's like, it's very difficult back and forth, like. As to what we're going to fund and to what extent, um, I think as the council, like, Councilor Bosman says, we need to do what we can with the budget that we have. We have so many asks, right, whether it's court services, or detox, or animal shelter, or powerhouse, or for, for soil, or. United Way, or Ring Lord Center, I mean, they're all great programs in our community, and finding that balance is super important, um. I think, um. There's a potential for me to maybe, um. I, I, as one counselor, would not go the full amount for the animal shelter, but I'm willing to, like, you talked to about maybe a little bit more to help offset some sort of the cost. I don't think we need to be covering fifty percent of their operational costs personally, um, you know. Um, so that's just my attitude.
So we would do point five percent in the, the county budget.
Well, we don't know what the county's going to do, and the county is almost two million dollars short of their budgets, I guess. I mean, I'm not speaking for the county, I'm going to bump the pay their budget, I just heard from. That that they're, um, looking for funding money because they're not, you know, not that old yet, and so, it's, um. Yeah, it's all, that's, that's, it's just tricky, it's a tricky balance, and regardless, regardless of anything, they're asking three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, and is that, it's, you know. Court services, our core program is only two hundred and seven, do you, is that more important, less important, like, where do we, you know, to some extent, that's very.
They're, well, I mean, they're total last was seven oh nine, seven oh four.
What?
Well, animals, so it's less.
For, out total, and for the animal shelter and the animal control was seven oh nine, it's forty percent of that total last bit, one point seven thing, all right, to be supportive, um.
That's a lot, I feel like that, but.
It is, it's, you know, I don't. It's more to keep us, you know, honest here, but ultimately, I can't discuss, but, um. You know, for me, like. They'll apply to use services, I wish we, I wish they would ask for more, you know, because I think a lot of what they do is upstream, that prevents the rest of the attorneys, the downstream stuff, that we're going to give more. Um, so, um. Yeah, it's really tough to try to. You know, wrap my head around what is deserving, I don't think it's necessarily a good list to have, it's who deserves it, no, it's better what, what is our role, and we know we provide these. Community support services that really enhance our livability and sets in place, um, so. Yeah, I don't, I don't know, um. One part I would just point out, especially when we look at the animal shelter, that part that gets a little bit tricky. Is they're asking for fifty percent from the county and fifty percent of the city. Well, all city or county residents, so when your county tax dollars, you could be paying for that fifty percent on that side, and then if you pay it from the city percent. You're actually paying more than the county's paying as a tax paid non-resident, so sometimes when you look at splitting those costs, it can make it a little bit more difficult to refer to what is the true cost that the city's doing, but. You're paying both city and county taxes, but those on county, you're just paying county taxes, uh, it does make it a little bit even more, more difficult, uh. Obviously, these, these changes are, uh, these costs are, you know, very dramatic, I just see about the animal shelter and that animal control contact, that's like three hundred thousand. Uh, that would require us to look at departments to figure out. Uh, some additional cuts to, to make those funding expenditures happen. Not saying that we wouldn't do that, obviously, the council directed, but just wanting to make sure the council knows that that goes down with redup pieces, so I'm here to help us make that happen.
The one, um, the human service block grant program is. Kind of intriguing to me, just because they're able to leverage those funds to the community so greatly, um. And they, and, and they parse it out, you know, and hitting so many different. Uh, organizations with different. About, you know, uh. Goals and objectives, which I really appreciate, so I don't know, that was kind of, and those funds seem so. All diversified, used and evaluated by United Way, that's just an interesting, that's an interesting request as well.
They're. They're going to give out, they want to give out, they're going to, they're taking eighteen grand as the administration fee, is that correct?
Yeah, they're dropping the. Little bit, it's a picture.
Right. Give more. But they gave up two sixty-five last year, but you know. Typically. Even sixteen grand, or worse, that's. Gosh.
That's true. It's the two million in funds that they've leveraged, it's impressive, two fifty. You know, for the community.
Sure. But I'll go up more, I need more.
Right.
Let there's more.
That's funny, you know, that, that, that's what's so intriguing about that, or, I mean. Then if you look at the balance between what the staff is. We're, we're suggesting, like, I, you know, it's not too much that we're cutting out of that, it's not a lot, and they're asking a significant amount, like, uh, looking at staff recommendations, I feel. And it is up, you're right, from twenty twenty-three. That hundred and three thousand. That hundred and three thousand. That. And we're giving a big chunk of that.
Was there still something outstanding for the powerhouse asked that somehow could be visible? Powerhouse, uh I remember last issue by the account trust from. Driving expenses on renovations, you know, building more maintenance on the building, something in the landscape, maybe, you know, some home. Maybe if you see a.
Landscaping project was funded by um a um. Creative Economy Commission, we ran through the larger stacks um last when I was on Creative Economy Commission. Um we did the HVAC and addition. And then when they presented their master plan to us, um council decided. Um we were gonna help with that HVAC system and that component of it, but not the other. But we did the landscaping on HVAC, right?
We did building renovations. I'm not exactly sure how much. HVAC was for sure on it. I think there may have been a little bit more out to it. Uh. We looked at it, I believe it was things that were maintenance only and not things that enhanced this curve. Uh. I believe the quote might have been something like, uh, we do, we were on land that we're obligated to do. I think we stuck with uh. Oh, the HVAC, there may have been some building renovations.
Yeah.
Where the buildings crumbling and maybe some parking lot driving. I think those were it.
And we did a, we funded a two exhibits, two not to this again through. So branch or but yes, I see it comes back, actually.
And then next week, is possible to get a debate on if there's still. Demand or ask outstanding that we should more time to consider this one.
I'm not interested in that.
Or ten, so.
It's a lawsuit.
Yeah, about the powerhouse. Um I didn't, I don't think there is a lawsuit.
Yeah.
I as attorney, 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 that's attorneys involved. They say has some issues um. They perceived has some issues with their lease and the subdivision of the property. Um a lot of the concerns are expressed, kind of went outside of that lease, were trying to bring up issues that weren't really related to lease. So so we have not engaged with them uh so far. The reason I asked you, I would.
Well, I said lots of things going on right now. I don't need it. I just the whole master plan. Yeah, they want like this whole strategy plan. If you're interested, you absolutely reach out. They'd be very happy to meet the counselor. I'm sure.
Erin, I do have a meeting with Jeff Sueser next week.
Okay.
Uh I think their ask is gonna be something. Different. Uh it still kind of hinges back to the discussion in from. Several months ago about the city helping them operationally, needing partners. So I think it's a. It it seems more of a change of model that they're going for than uh anything else. And that's going to take. Some significant time and analysis versus if that's a. Is their complaint in the budget stands out with the powerhouse?
Yeah.
Okay, so they have to give us. They would. And there's, there's another thing that would be a um issue with power.
So this is great. Thank you.
Anything else on our community support services?
I'm just to clarify, what, what is the. Impression that you have gotten from council as a direction on feedback for the community support services? My, my question was, my suggestion was to clarify. Which of the entities that asked are asking, so not qualifications. So we have a better understanding of what are the asking. Not all, what just likes, bits, whatever we have control over, as well as. I, I as one counselor, like to see uh the ones that we discussed fully funding with their request, because in my opinion, it comes later. We have extremely good financial position in our city. So that was my position and others. You know, powerhouse or no support.
A minute ago, staff recommendations, I believe.
Season one point seven eight billion to find all that. The hundred percent for all of the community support services. Is that what I mean?
No, so we had the uh the ones that I remember was last week, the human service block grant. I think we can add. Fun.
Right, so the total, the total of all of that is one seventy nine. That would, that's the ask.
Okay, so is that the total of the requested?
Right, yeah, you can add it up. There's three line items that are different. It's the human block services, the animal control contract and the animal shelter.
So the difference is a hundred and forty.
Three hundred.
Forty.
Yeah, three hundred. Yeah, I I would say it's um, did you say one point seven?
I think that's what was came to us, right? Is that what came to us last?
Yeah.
Was the question being done.
Funny, but.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I think we'll get to that later, yeah, but I mean, this is one of the.
Correct.
Very nice.
I mean, I I think from my side, it's like, if you're looking for direction, it's like your proposals to fund it, fund it.
Okay, I mean, I know which ladder forms to handle.
I think it's just a general, like funded with us going back and looking at departments where we could cut to fund it. Is, because is that what we're looking for? Like, I'm just trying to figure out some part of this.
No, I'm making other comments, only like maybe maybe they're intended, you can understand that water tax, city. Chelsa. I I think, let me make a comment, then maybe you have a better respect of why I think you can fund a lot of it. If you look at the total fund outs. We have a hundred and fifty six million total fund outs for the beginning of twenty twenty four. It's on the budget, right?
Uh the mind summary, they estimate it being?
They estimate.
Okay, one one. I think that was, then I also like to review the requirements for fund balances.
I, it's all my best.
And so what part of that can fund things for me? Like can the airport fund this? Can the water fund this? Can the? Two twenty fifteen sales tax fund this? Like that, like you throw these big numbers of like all this office money, but they're like restricted. We can't just spend wherever we want.
We have balance, we have.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And our balance.
I I I highlighted, so it's like, focus on government's ability to cover its costs and fees that provide the services to its citizens for the year. That's right. And so my understanding is that we may have that, but those are in covered funds. So they're, they're dedicated.
If you guys want to just follow my.
Oh, yeah, sure. That's right.
You can feedback what you. So we have fund balance. Um I took your proposal that starts at the first generation with a fifty four with a hundred and fifty six million. And we are in this budget expecting to end with a hundred and five. That shows on this paper. If I go back one year, last year's budget. We said, we had, we had a starting fund balance of uh eighty two million and. Last year's budget, we were saying we're gonna finish the year with sixty seven million. That was last year's budget discussion. We are ninety million off. In the way we budgeted last year compared to how we now look at the start of twenty twenty four, ninety million. Is that include the forty five percent that you just reserved?
No, that's not.
Okay, it includes that. It's gonna include your surplus, which we do have a running fund balance, but we haven't been able to buy vehicles. We have vehicles that are. Needing to be returned, that you can't just go and use that to fund something else. Uh the other part of it is. I think the the core to it is these are operational expenses and you don't use fund balance to fund operational expenses because these will be year after year after year costs. Because once you increase these, the animal shelter is gonna come back the next year in one three forty four. And one part of. Even in G F A, you don't use fund balance to fund operations. If you wanna do it one time. That's absolutely within your call. I think there is an opportunity fund in general fund, which is totally unrestricted, about a billion dollars. And that's the way you might use it. Then, you know, we could tell those grants, the community supports, a one time fund. We're giving this as one time, don't expect the same next year. But I think it's gonna put you in a different part of explaining.
And I'll just do a little track record of history. So twenty twenty four, we are, we are telling, we have spent a huge amount of money on. Lots, lot, lot of origin with these capital projects that are coming. We're gonna spend our eighty nine fifty one million. We did the same on twenty two, we did the same in the twenty two budget year. We done it for every year where we budget, we have a budget. That in applies, we can spend down every reality. We are a huge amount of millions of dollars off in the ending result.
This is always the common. And.
And I'm trying to think about, why is that? And the key reason is because we'll get to that capital projects for these anticipated nineteen. In my budget, have all the. It's totally. So when we ask for, and it shows an increasing fund balance, because we are at one fifty six last year, we begin with actual. Number of things, a hundred and sixteen for this year. And one thousand twenty three, actual politics, fund balance is diamonds. So we're, the numbers are so often. It's really unbelievable, but it's a good thing because. And you don't know, based on our tracker, that we have not spent every year that amount of money. Why don't we put it to produce for projects that we either can utilize or in this case. Community uh funds, uh programs for entities that are able to put that money to produce for that apartment.
Wouldn't it be possible um at the next meeting to get a statement that would show us. Where exactly where the increase in the fund balance is happening, what line items and why? So that as a full council, we are very prepared to talk about why the fund balance is. Expected to be a hundred and five million dollars in twenty twenty four. And know specifically what those fund balances can be used for. Um because this conversation has a tendency to come up in meetings on a regular basis. And and we need to be able to, it, from what I understand from what Jose answered. To Olivia's comment is that, yes, we could use their, we have a million dollars in operating reserve. We want to use those type of funds for this one time purchase, but but. I want to be very clear for the community and transparent and having them recognize and then having all of us have a real firm understanding. Of what that hundred and five million dollars can be used for and what we are expecting to be used for going forward.
Because of our reserves, we talked about using it to fund some trains and stuff. We talked about using it to fund housing.
And we used, yes, yes. Four point five billion of last year for housing.
Yes.
And so, you know, but that's what we have. And so I think because this conversation comes up over and over again, especially now that he's saying that. It's inappropriate or um or wrong that we're increasing it by the amount from last year. I think it would be helpful for us to have. That statement so that we understand.
Because we could, you know, take for example, like the airport, right? Like you have a big construction cost coming in. And so that affects some all of these numbers. And then when you get typical type or different funding for case to be, that will affect numbers like. That is not, we can use to, you know, help the human society out. Like, um, we can't, I mean, Tony's great and he does a lot of things over there by himself. So he doesn't have to pull, you know, money or whatever, but I don't think he's housing puppies out there. Yes, yes. Anyway, so I just, I was, I think it's super important that we don't keep saying this like fund mounting. Some of that is our reserves that we have to have, because we have policies in place for some of that. Like you can't just keep throwing out these. These numbers that don't mean what you're saying. You're just, I feel like there's this political jargon that just keeps coming out. To create headlines and to make people like upset. And it's not true, but it's literally not true. The accusations and what's happening. And so just be careful as to like. Where we're going and and how we're going to fund it. Um I'm gonna say I'm going to go with staff recommendations on. The wherever we were just staff, uh community support services, um unless. There is uh argument for maybe a little increase for the um. Human services block grant or the animal shelter, if you want to meet halfway or meet somewhere. But I would rather use a uh opportunity reserve for housing transit. Um alleyways is where we can get out of that fifty fifty and actually get more of or sidewalks or whatever it is. Uh but that's my reference. That's one council.
Uh clarifying that. Some accusations, the numbers I call are straight from the proposed budget, then from my staff. We have a hundred and fifty six million total fund balance estimated for the end of twenty twenty four. And we have a total operating budget of possibly under seventy million. Uh for revenues, this is revenue citywide. So. I think to have a total fund back, like, of course, putting these two parts revenue.
I think that would be some um guidance for community support services, right?
Okay, so this is how I understand it. We've got a fund out, no matter what the number is. We've got home over accounts that we could pay for because we allocated. Spending on that on contracts. So they just move forward to the next year. But it looks like we have more money to. Checkmen are already finowing for those capital projects or whatever obligations we have. So the fund balance is flexible because we don't know when they're gonna complete a capital project. And we're gonna have to pay that bills. Those funds have to stay there because we contracted for millions of dollars to pay those.
That that's a small portion of it that's committed, but you make a good one. That's an argument that can be made for that smaller portion. The problem that I have with it is that if we allocate. Uh money to projects, I'm not gonna take this, this is significantly important because I'm. Twenty twenty one, I think six and a half million, but indeed out of thirty four million. Uh what we invited, that's excluding uh. And this year, if you look at open path. This is not the open. We have a budget. It's. We've got nine mil, nine million or eight million power, I meant a budget.
Sky. Wait, 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 we just want to look. Okay, so as a governmental entity to to our as community brand, we've had the concept for a project and had the full cost in our budget. To make sure we can complete the payment and then contract the student, we cannot tell where we get the topics in them because there's always. Stay with the suckles tend to. So that is why some ask for that as a.
That's great, of course. Is there a way, I think, I think there is a lack of understanding. Um between encumbering fund balances and unencumbered fund balances. Is there a way to um have a really clear presentation on. The funds that are encumbered in the fund balance of a hundred and five million?
Absolutely. Uh we'll give a couple of things. We've done this historically already. Uh I know when Cynthia was here, she presented about fund balance does not mean cash in hand, correct? Uh there are things that go on with it. You have twenty five percent reserves. You have some huge capital projects, which, yeah, you may not have gotten. We were all within COVID times supply chains, drastically increasing uh construction costs. Let's look at the fire station at it right now. It puts a seven hundred eighty five dollars worth. But they hadn't reduced. So we're working in a different realm of how to go through with these things. So projects and projections that we said earlier. Haven't come true, but the project doesn't go away. The need for that project doesn't say, oh, we can now just transfer this money and go somewhere else because we no longer have this project. We have to go back and regroup and go through. I think that's what you're seeing in some of the fund balances in regards to why it's there for government. Look at the circle, I know that's the big one, the B E S. COVID couldn't buy any vehicles. So we started getting vehicles and guess what? We're about to get hit. The auto workers track. And what are they not gonna keep vehicles? And I know the big chief, how many vehicles are you waiting on? Uh. The two or so, we're gonna take two or three farms. And so if you use that money and you put it to something else.
Right.
He's not gonna have fifteen vehicles that he needs. And so that's the biggest part when we look at fund now. So if you look at it, it's just this number. And you don't take the encumbered part and the needs that are still there, you're gonna cripple your infrastructure within the organization.
Makes sense.
And I think you had a. Number that you wanted to clarify.
Yeah, so on this slide. There's my point to it for you guys on this slide. This is not, this is something that's been downloaded from, sorry, up here, open the. These bottom line numbers, we're picking up this twice. So I will be sending out a revised number. This is actually a hundred and fifteen million. This is cat, what is it? Is it on my screen there?
Hundred fifty million, then a hundred and eighty six million.
Hundred and eighty six million.
Two hundred and twenty nine million.
Two hundred and twenty nine.
Still negative fifty nine million and then seventy two million.
Yeah, that's correct. So when we're looking at our, and I apologize, but when we're looking at our, all of it combined, does not change the budget. This is just an ability for the council to be able to see this information in a combined format. This cell was picking up both of these. Um and so I will send out a revised, and I have to send it out in Excel format if that would make council more comfortable. But I did want to highlight that piece of it, I apologize, the massive document. Take accountability for it, but I apologize that is what happened there, so. Um I will send that out, we will also, my team will huddle after this and we'll get you the information on those. Dollars as far as what's included in that fund balance, that we're looking at different equipment. What projects are in the pipeline to water, sewer, airport, that are all in those fund balances. And then um there was slated on the presentation about the BAN chart showing those um. Uh capital projects and when they are expected to be completed and what are there.
I don't know what to say, I'm going to say I I don't know what to say. If you say, I I reviewed this document, there was a human error in that the fund balance has dropped forty forty nine dollars.
In this combined summary, the counselor both of them stated, in all the other fund summaries, they're absolutely fine. Um this is the combined summary that we present for council. Um it it appears to be a problematic conversation um that we have as part of the presentation. But in every other one of the fund summaries, those are correct, and council approves that at a fund summary.
Excellent.
And so I, like I said, I apologize for the human error, it's a massive document, I take full accountability, but.
Do you think this makes two?
Creepy.
Okay, yeah, um and so also like all these C I Ps, those are approved through council, right? And all this, so when we talk about encumbered funds, we're talking about city direction. That council direction, I was given, say, we approve these projects about money that's tier marked for those projects that we.
We're back on community supporter. Okay, so the more guide on community support. I don't know, you know, I think we're Jessica and Olivia stand, do you guys want to provide anything about that?
On the community support services, but I'm not much.
Much?
I don't know, just kidding, um. I'm really, we're not, I like telling people that, especially for our, I will service our community, but. I guess when I'm forced to make the any decision of whether or not I'm going to support our youth. Or support our good nonprofits that that provide good. Are alive for the community, but also good investment into the the community supports. Or choose between, and our core services that has a one point eighty percent arrest rate. You can see the dividends being paid on the daily for that that program. The detox center, I mean, for taking care of humans in our community that everybody needs help. And I hate to say it, but the fact that the humane society admitted that they've been able to make it work with the funds that they have. I'm willing to give a little bit more, if we can find maybe similar ones somewhere, but. An extra three hundred thousand dollars, that seems like a lot, especially when they've been able to make it work within those constraints. Me, as a business or as a nonprofit, we all have to operate within certain constraints, right? And that has to be, here we are, we're talking about having to operate within these constraints. Um and so.
You can probably fundraise your puppies and kittens, a lot of these, you're going to be able to fundraise through jobs.
True, and and you know, and maybe there's some some other great grant opportunities out there to force capital improvements like H. Um, yeah, I I I don't know, like. I I don't want to say no, but at the same time, if I'm going to be, I have to choose between the funding services and the block grants and core services. I'm going to choose that. And and this is coming from another guideline. My wife, we we take in and foster dogs all the time in our house, so flip it to. And and to my sugar, I I didn't want to take on one that is a foster, but we took on a rota. And run it as an amazing dog, so. We love supporting the humane society personally. And so I don't want this to seem like we don't support our our animal, I wish people that the the the. The individual that are able to listen to our community. I feel like we 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 do personally support that organization group. So I just just want to say definitely personally.
Hi, thank you, really good points. And also, it's interesting to see the twenty twenty three adopted budget and and you know, the increase in requests, which are already. Um you know, you're meeting quite a bit of that in a lot of these ways, like you pointed out, for the human services block grant. But we're already at seventy five thousand, so it's interesting the increases that have been, that have that have come this year, especially. Um the the three hundred, so. So I think I'm supporting um, you know, the position, I actually would love to see if we could. Find some little bit more, but we but we are increasing, our twenty twenty four budget does include increases already. Um they. With the except, you know, there's, we haven't, we haven't increased for the animal shelter or the animal control contract from twenty twenty three. So I don't know, there's a way to find some funds to do a little bit of increase, but anyway, I I'm I'm kind of agreeing with where Dave and Jessica are. Are going on with this.
Is there, I mean, is there any sort of? We will, I'm not saying three hundred thousand dollars worth of, but is there maybe more for the animal control operations contract that we could? Maybe in town, is there a? There a range? Because I like you, you're sitting in a little room and I come in with like five, twenty nine, I'm going to three thousand, three hundred thousand. Okay, I don't know, I I guess that's where I'm trying to to bank them. We'll take it down as a note and as we get through reconciliation or as the council goes to council, uh, means decides to correct. Maybe for manner, uh, you can also take a look at it, just could use that question for your, I'm sure they want their, the rest of things for that.
Like, why, like fifty thousand or one ninety four, that's like a twenty five percent increase for, you know, but it last year, this year, like that's a little, like a little.
Right.
Like help them out, you're obviously the states are longer at the animal shelter, we understand that, we, you know, feel your game to the extent we can.
Okay, or make a note of it and take a look.
That's for animal control and state.
Mostly the animal cover out there.
Yeah, right, I think we could probably take some money out of the crossroads facility each contribution. Because isn't that like capital improvements, with that and something? And maybe um I'm hoping I checked that out. Humane society, it's going to be, and so that's a hellish.
Is the one fifty easy to you?
Uh.
In human's treatment.
Yeah, that's easy to do.
That's the A T U, that's that much help. I'm not willing to take anything out of that, A T U is one of the more important words, you know.
But I would get it, I think we should have, sorry, see, if I'm all that you think.
There's a little, but there's there's.
Yeah.
Just so that knows that, you know.
Twenty five, twenty plus.
When I'm trying to go with staff recommendations, you guys avoid the word this.
Yeah.
Way more than I am. You know, the pit hall. So the whole, it's.
We'll make a note and we'll take a look.
Okay.
Take that as a.
So just so.
You're doing okay.
Just so we're clear, it's related to the animal shelter, um but then the, what about the United Way grant?
Right, this is related to one I agree with, animal shelter.
Animal shelter, okay.
Thank you.
You can get your internal services on, you can get one.
Okay, all right, well, if you're just going to be, I'm going to turn it over to Elliot, so we'll stay on one, say, to the transcript.
Thank you, Devin, for letting us make this presentation, so. Um this is the internal service funds that um, a little bit related to the location plan, but. Um let's see, we'll start on technology replacement, the self insurance part, I know just any department. So the technology replacement fund, um, the division of, uh, place where we all are, please, Kate. Um to put together, schedule, like, replacing, or, and collaborate staff here in this room, based on a service life. And I worked with Justin Maria, pretty successfully to put together their replacement schedule. We did make a couple of changes this year, mainly just changing from adjustable adjustable payment schedule to fixed payment schedule. Um for the department, so it's going to just procedural update. Uh we can account for all the liabilities and all payments going into the technology replacement fund back to. Um to talk a little bit more about the schedule, this is what we put together. By determined, um what is what is actually being paid in the good of the parent, and then the expense side. On the expense side, we do, we do have this specific um. Accent code, I don't know if we use, change, schedule out, that's actually a good place. I'd say be impressed working with I T on there, Angel Ackman, putting this together and making sure that things get replaced as needed. And having so, or that on on the bigger things like servers and that sort of thing, it's all. Any questions? Okay, um moving on to self insurance, um this has been um. Fund that we are closely monitoring this year. And going and looking at our claims from this year, apparent this year to last year, we do have reduction claims here today. So the fund balance is increasing, but this is one where there's a little bit more risk attached with it. Can't necessarily control when claims are coming in. So some years this may have a ground fund out, some years this may have a reduced fund out. But we do um work with experts in the insurance field to make sure that we are adequate in the funding this. Um and making sure that we have enough for this higher risk and higher claims years.
Just the commentary on this one, if y'all remember, this was one that was flagged with our fund balance. Uh we've made some health plan changes, so good job by uh Bonnie and our H R team for that, the high deductible health plan. So far, I'm going with, that's not wood, that's plastic, so you're fair. Uh you know, it seems to have been working, we're not seeing the high claims that we had seen before. So we'll continue to go through this this mitigation portion until you go through. However, if you, high claims do come in, they tend to come in towards the end of the year. So uh so far so good, I think we saw with the addition of the health, high deductible health plan, as we did see a considerable amount jump into that plan. Uh which definitely helps us with the consumer, that may be a consumer as well within, so it's looking better, so those adjustments seem to be panning out right now.
Okay, um moving on to the risk management fund, pretty similar story where we can't necessarily control claims. But we are looking at this pretty thoroughly this year to make sure that whatever benefit we're using, we're getting. Best, the best value citizens dollar involved in enterprise fund dollars. To make sure that we have the, I feel the fundness. Um in the initial quote that we got, we did have a twenty five percent increase year over year with both work comp and property casualty insurance. Um which is a pretty big one item adjustment, thousand dollars. So we have worked with that provider and a couple of other industry experts to make sure that we're getting the best value. Doctorable analysis to see if there's some cost savings by adjusting doctorables. But this will be one that we will see more on in reconciliations, we don't, I don't, again. I will do.
Eric Katz, maybe I went to the rest of the presentation about sponsors, about how it's increasing, really this time of year.
Yeah, absolutely true, we were, we were hit with them, I think there's a couple of things, just as you look at our deductible, we're with Dan. Uh I'll give that a big shout out as he has rolled up his sleeves and really got into. Sirsa and their financials and trying to figure out where where do we need to be. Uh so we are actually also looking at some other providers of insurance, which is a little bit different. Uh but I think with the high increase, it's a, it's a costing, we have some somewhat maybe a control over, we continue to look at other options that might be available. So uh big shout out to the budget team, like they're getting into uh those those areas and finding maybe some outside of the box. Uh areas that we can maybe reduce our expense to curators.
Yeah, so any other questions on self insurance risk management? Okay, um we're moving on to effective infrastructure network, uh industrial services. This is where we will look at the vehicle and equipment service part. Um so we've done some pretty significant work this year to delineate out essentially the liability to each department, just like we did with I T replacement fund. For all the replacements due to the departments. Um and we can show that um within a hundred thousand dollars of the fund balance that we have available. And the liability to the departments, what is, what is scheduled to be replaced. Uh we do, and we were able through doing that analysis, we were able to find out. What was the main cause of our, of our replacement? And and it is COVID, just by the numbers, eighty percent of our backlog started in twenty twenty. Uh there's a few vehicles that are in our schedule that are before that, but most of those are only. Trailers, those specialty trailers that the departments don't actually want to um replace necessarily, because they've done so much work. They, uh to the, to the equipment and they still work well, so our fleet manager has done a really good job of. Working departments um to try to mitigate some of that backlog. Um as they mentioned, we are, we may still have uh backlog going into twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Because of the autoworker strike, um working with some of our suppliers, they've already told us that we may not be able to get the full allotment that we get each year from them. Um so we will continue to track, to show the liability to each of the departments. Um for whatever that backlog is and on. On this here, you can see, and it is a little small, we see this, uh what is scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty four. Um and you can see that it is specified out exactly which vehicle is going to be replaced, what department they're coming from. So we can show that specifically with the enterprise departments. Um even if the, uh even if we're a little bit behind on the actual placement. Have the possibility to that apartment, they will get the full service for paying into it. Uh earlier I mentioned that there's a lot of other, like there's a big difference between the current fund balance and liability that we have. Approved it, approved with the fund, and that's because when vehicles have used their service life for, for us, we do sell them. And that's, that's where we increase the fund balance and maintain a little bit of a reserve in in funds, it's just selling, let's be, the used equipment.
If I can add one moment to this too, through twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four, we are seeing a larger increase in maintenance costs as our fleet ages. Um obviously that becomes a bigger issue. Um we're seeing more repeat vehicles coming into the shop for repair and maintenance, O and M pieces. And so our fleet team has been really trying to work with some of the local partners in our area to see if we can schedule out. Oil changes and things of that nature, so that we can focus on if we get a track trucking, for example, that we're able to really focus on. Fixing that, or we could take, um you know, the patent vehicle where we could take that to have maintenance elsewhere.
I had a little question, thank you for that summary. I, I was just wondering, you have the purchase price, then you do the replacements, transfers based on its lifetime. Using the purchase price, so how do you account for a vehicle that ten years ago was twenty five thousand dollars, it's thirty five thousand?
Uh great questions, we use. Uh, great questions. We use, uh. We've used a flat rate inflation and that's a 100% increase per year. So we do multiply the. The purchase price by 3% and the and the useful life of the vehicle that's anticipated to come up with the the replacement cost.
Okay, so replacement cost is not the actual purchase. It's not like. It's not like depreciation where you take the actual purchase price and chop it up slash. You actually. Replacement balance actually accounting for the 3% interest.
Any other questions? Uh, moving on to the general services fund. So, um. This fund is an interdepartmental fund where I like to think of it most as as the warehouse that we have where consolidate a lot of services. Um, to find cost savings. Like. If anybody in the city needs to order paper for printing, we don't get off steep by that individually. We buy that. Uh, get it from our general services department. It's relatively small fund, but. We do balance it over here. This year. Um, we may have an amendment to correct it. So our balance based on how much it's been used, but. It's nothing that we're. Have any loose links. Any question on general services?
I was wondering, okay, so 2023, our total revenue is 97,000. Uh, what? You, uh, you think, uh. All the daily increase to 242,000.
Um, can you answer that one? I think like.
Sure.
Okay, so we're just trying to correct. You'll see on the 23 adopted in 23 amended that ending fund balance is showing a negative. And now 47. A thousand. So we will make working an amendment to council as part of our year end process. We're looking to do that. Uh, the December fifth council meeting. So any of those 2023 changes that we need to make. As a last call, we'll be doing that on December 5. Um, so for 24, we're looking to try and then increase that so that we're able to show a positive ending fund balance. And that's based on, um. Usage by each of the different areas. So we can keep an inventory. It's part of our. Annual audit. Um, and so that's just based on the different uses of that warehouse.
Moving on to building maintenance. So, um, this is a fund that is relatively new. Now, there may be a end of year amendment again to correct the negative fund balance. One that has to do with the EPC contract, which. Together a little party. Party infographic here on how. Uh, that's going to go. So from the building maintenance fund that built it, the biggest expense is the EPC contract. Um, and we have delineated out, um. The the departments that are in buildings that are getting. Equipment and benefit from the EPC. Um, are paying into the building maintenance fund on a schedule that we worked out with that department. Um, and then from there, it's going to go to pay McKinstry and payments. Lease contract. But like so. Again, relatively simple fund. There's kind of a whole lot going in and out right now. That are questions on the building maintenance fund.
Yeah, the lease purchase agreement is for, I think, five million. And the total EPC contract is for seven million. We associate the lease purchase agreements. Departments in five.
Again, we do have a party here that. I can, yeah. Um, so those numbers are not the correct numbers. Um, these purchases for 4.2 million dollars. The contract with McKinstry is for, uh. I would have to pull it up, but it's something around five million dollars. Uh, we're getting a million dollar grant from Bola. We're getting, uh, an estimated 1.1. Uh, two. Getting federal rebate, uh, dollars and, um, the remaining. Is being funded through contributions from all the various facilities and ones that are going to benefits from. From the the construction project and the energy conservation issues.
So again, if I understand you correctly, so you said $5 million is the contract?
Um, I I don't have the exact number on hand, um, but I could look it up very quickly. Um, we have a detailed energy performance contract budget. That we can share. It shows that the cash flow, this is a. A simplified version of that, but yeah, we track. Every every single project is broken out. So, you know, transportation, for instance, relatively small, but the transportation budget is paying for the equipment going in and the transportation for tracking energy savings there. The, uh, dollar grant and the, um. The, uh. Solar, the the tax, the federal tax remakes, it's solar that we track on purpose project basically. Um, and so, yeah, we're doing all of that. Uh, cash, cash flow tracking internally and the building maintenance fund really from an accounting perspective, really, uh, it's really helpful because. Rather than every single one of these, uh. These funds, you know, paying off. Directly to the lease purchase or cutting the check to McKinstry. We use the building maintenance fund kind of as that internal bank to manage the cash flow in the project.
Is the. Is the purchase agreement opening signs and. Pay for it to not have cost or was it?
No, so that was the ordinance process that that council went through earlier this year in about April, May. So the lease purchase has been executed, fully executed. The funds that, so we get funds to pay McKinstry out of that lease purchase agreement. So. Uh, the Bank of America gave us funds. Those are sitting in escrow right now. And so as we pay McKinstry. Um, for their work on the on the project, we pull those funds out of escrow to reverse ourselves to keep to keep that bond balance. And then as we have pulled those funds out in future years, we will. It's a financing mechanism. So we'll owe those that money back to Bank of America over the course of the lease term, which is 20 years. Um, we also factored in an opportunity to have a prepayment, which is directly associated with those federal tax remakes. So. Um, because that's a rebate, we needed the money upfront and then we, so we can pay. For the cost of the services, when we get that rebate, we will immediately use that as a prepayment back on the cost of financing.
So. Of course, because of finance. We had we had to pay quite a bit to get the financing structure of this.
Correct. So it was, uh, 3. Uh, I believe it's 3.9. Again, I have the numbers right in front of me by the interest rate associated with that. And that was presented before council. It's one of the cost considerations for for going this round.
Thank you for the update. My my suggestion as one counselor, I'll make it. Is that I would prefer to see some of our funds used to just. Pay off the lease purchase agreement straight off the bat.
Yep.
Because the lease purchase agreement, I think in total cost and interest and setup piece was about $2 million. Uh, that we could have saved if we applied the funds that I believe we have available. Uh, to, but I'll want to save and I'll explain.
Anyway. Um, I I just to that point, so council is aware, there is a slight prepayment penalty on paying back early. It's actually not very high. The terms are relatively. Uh, reasonable. I think it's something like. Like one or 2% repayment penalty. So we can absolutely. Uh, take advantage of our penalty free prepayment, which is up to a maximum of 1.2 million dollars. So if. Let's see, what's the difference there? Uh, $70,000, we could. Even prepay a little bit more to reduce that those interest payments. And then we can also make prepayments. Um, and that certainly is something for a future council consideration. We are paying interest on the lease purchase. Uh, that was. Uh, one of the costs that council. Determined was acceptable to take on for this project. Um, if we do make early payments back on that lease purchase, there would be a small prepayment penalty, but there is that 3.9% interest. And so compared to how our funds are potentially earning. Uh. Revenue in our ways, um, this this is beyond me where where I'm currently sitting and how we're making money off our money. Um, but if if there's a way to shift those funds onto prepayment that would reduce interest payments, we don't have. Um. Any other identified needs for those funds, that is definitely possible in the future.
Yeah, I would also add that I've I've done the math to figure out what the net would be to win that prepaid penalty that Marty talked about. And. When we would pay with paid that. Based on our our payment schedule. Um, and it is not. It is on. They are to. Say we have the funding to pay off, but if some group would consider it.
Do you have this? Pretty fine, 3.9%.
Right, really? That would be instead of that, right? Uh, between 1 and 2% of a lot of our funds. Well, but it's definitely.
Yeah, and that's a great point. These are, this is a coffee, but it's, you know, it's a. Finding some interest off and we have a completely big money in the channel that identify the fund at the same time. The fact that we went for. A financing mechanism, a big part of that was actually the cost of these funds because of financing needs and paying out over time, we get additional capital to. Yeah, but.
Thank you. Thank you, Donlin.
Um, and with that, uh, some other questions on, uh, your building maintenance fund or your internal service fund in general? And start with. Enterprise funds. To such a good body. But I want to give thanks. You got much.
We're going to call it that. Can't say that they're going to see.
Why not?
Thank you.
Please restart meeting.
We're gonna start. First, when we look at the extended sugars, those are really complete or circuit levels. And you being of now. The transit grant updates.
Yeah, thank you. So this is just kind of a follow up to the one on one updates that we had with Jose's one on ones. And just to play with the study question topic, I thought this might be a good time to give you a stat and update of where we are for trend operating and capitals, but this is not reflective of our full transit revenue or even all of our department grants, mobile grants, just related to trend that operate and capital expenses. We are kind of in various phases of contracting and getting this funding implemented. So just wanted to step through this with you guys. Once again, you know, you will be seeing in the reports that we're going to be dipping down into our fund balance pretty significantly this year as a result of CDOs backlog and contracting. These are all awards that we have been awarded and have received and budgeted for, but we have not contracted. So we aren't able to spend them yet at this point. And that was, you know, based on a variety of reasons that we discussed in our previous updates. But you can see that the 2.5 over $2.5 million outstanding contracts of grants has been forwarded to Trend already. These first three are capital, so that's fleet replacement or infrastructure grants. The first one was awarded back in 2020. We ordered this pair of transit bus replacement and based on some of the supply chain issues, that grant or that award was canceled because it wasn't that type of vehicle available at the time. So the grant expires in December of this year. CDO is currently extending that contract at the next year. It's going to be a flagrant take to the bus. The congressionally directed spending award, this was awarded in 2021, purchasing an EV bus and the associated charging infrastructure. So we can be done piloting EV fleet. That we are waiting on a contract with CDOT. We are anticipating that that's going to move forward as a contract this year. So we'll be able to place that order in the future. This FTA 5339, this is a purchase of four new buses that, you know, as Debbie was talking about, we're starting to see a lot of attacks on our fleet and not being able to purchase vehicles because of supply and this is also taking cost increases since COVID. We were awarded this award at the beginning of 2022 and we're anticipating a contract by July of next year, which is going to probably put us back to 2025, end of 2025, or Now we're getting into the operating ones, the operating grants, which have a little bit more severe implications that you'll see in the revenue reports. So this 5311 expansion award was given to us for the transit service that we're getting ready to launch. It was a $50,000 award. CDO did issue pre-award authority for this one, saying we can go ahead and improve expenses and it would be reimbursed to us once the contract was signed. So we are moving forward under that pre-award authority for this 5311, $50,000. The most significant impact and the one that's going to dip us down into our fund balance is the faster operating award. This is supposed to cover all of our 2023 operating expenses and we were awarded it in the summer of 2022. So it is fairly egregious that we haven't yet been contracted this amount. At this point, I've requested and CDO has agreed that they're going to roll it forward to 2024, so it will serve as the local match portion of our 2024 operating award. We're going to contract in that way and have those contracts in place by January 1st. There is the new director at the CDO Division of Transit, Merrell, has she does some assurances that it's a priority and they will be ready to go for all of our equipment and projects. So it's going to be the part of grant to the 5311, $80,000. So this year, just so the council is aware, we will be dipping into the fund balances. We cover all 100% of our transit operating funding out of the transportation services under price funding. And then the last one is an award that we unified of, that we expected to receive. That's for 2024, grant the operating expenses and that one is also expected to be contracted. So I just wanted council to have a snapshot of what's outstanding, but know that we are moving forward and contracting and once we get through the 2023 impacts of our revenue for our fund balance that we are anticipating that we reimburse everything.
Thanks, Sarah.
Okay, so I just have one question. Okay, so you said you were that
the 700,000, seven week second administrative funds, you're going to use that as a matching graph for the following year. So what happens to the current?
Right. Yeah. So that's definitely the challenge. We are happy to absorb all those costs from our transportation funds. So we luckily, thankfully, we do have a fund balance in the transportation fund that we were able to use to maintain these operations this year without making any service reductions or laying people off. And that one, we can keep our all transit property state who are off, but they're taking this contract backlog. So we are grateful that we're not having to make any reductions, but it is impacting our fund balance. I'm glad we have it there for these different situations.
So this is the transportation fund at a fund level summary. So Sarah discussed a little bit about what we're showing as far as those revenues. You'll see on the expenditures, these are at a divisional level. And so you can see that there is pretty, like I had mentioned, pretty flat, if not reduced cost in there when you're looking at those expenditures. So just wanted to provide that for council and then also the CIP facility improvements will be discussed in the upcoming slide that we discussed the 2015 Harks Mountain Total Fund there as well. So. Moving on to our water operating fund, water operating. So the public works department does have some position requests included as part of the request. We had multiple positions to support the maintenance and the replacement residential meters. Some of those meters were from a CIP plan. We're looking to try and replace those meters so that we're able to get those onto a better product moving forward. And so Justin and his team will be working hard on that. As we look at the strategic plan considerations, the college makes the treatment facility improvement feasibility study. This will order the improvement identified in the 2021 water master plan and form the five year CIP plan and refocus efforts in the water construction fund. Water and sewer rate studies. So as we had discussed earlier, the 2023 rate study was not adopted by council. And in 24, council will be asked to provide input on the new water and sewer rate study to balance the water fund to meet water requirements as well as for the ordinance. And so this will also include sustainability metrics and fund capital improvements organized by the college makes the water treatment facility feasibility study. And then also the goal will be to match budget to actuals of 5% of water construction fund annually fails to meet its spending goal. And so the focus of 24 will be to match the budget to the actuals by reducing the budget or increasing the actuals. So that's the focus for water in 2024. The water operating, this is the fund of summaries that you can see revenues there are showing a slight decrease compared to the 2023 amended. And that is primarily looking at water sales and residential. And then you can see throughout the different divisions, how those budgets are being reflected. Again, we're kind of a small, a smaller increase there to those operating. Underneath the operating expenditures on there, you can see that transfer to capital projects fund. And so that transfer is to cover the capital projects that exist in water construction. And then you could see the ending fund balance for the operating fund and then the fine ending fund balance, taking both operating and capital together. Any questions on water? We do have Justin Elkins, our utilities manager, available. Hearing none, all crews on to sewer. So sewer, sewer operation maintenance budget is increasing significantly because of previous work performed on our construction fund portion of the budget. So that's been moved to operations and maintenance. In 2024, the collection system assessment, utilities division completed an assessment, which will involve the sewer maintenance repair for the super O and M fund and also from the sewer construction fund for video confirmation and five year replacement schedule. They will also be focusing on doing data driven decisions. So their flash collection systems, data system prep informs only real time data. The display and alarming notifications. And so the utilities division is working with IT to store data in city network database. And also have the ability to manipulate that data to read total flow of global alarm notifications for each lift station. It's also for staff where to implement changes to reduce failure probability. So those are the big focuses for sewer in 24. Again, you can see here, again, at a fund summary level for sewer operating, that there is a slight increase to our treatment residential and commercial as well as throughout here, you will see some increases in interest to some degree. And then you can see that at the divisional level, small increases or decreases related to what I previously discussed. You can also see that we are running for $1.4 million transfer to sewer construction fund. So you can see that change in fund balance beginning and ending for sewer. Question on sir. Airport administration. So in airport administration for airport the expanding pay for certification programs for employee development, increasing public parking lot harbor related funding to update aging equipment, a freshman development and trading funding to enroll employee development, executing a website update, completion of an electric load study to advance future implementation of rental car electric vehicle charging infrastructure and increasing the budget for IT networking equipment, fiber optic upgrades to build greater resiliency within the airport's IT infrastructure. In 2024, we have initiated construction phase one via the terminal expansion project. Encourage maximum airline seat capacity within the market through air service development and airport marketing initiatives. Complete construction phase one of the landslide parking development. Initiate phase two of the landslide parking development, complete commercial apron concrete joint seal project. Update the airport's website and complete a visibility study for future aircraft de-acing locations. Here you can see that the airport Tony has quite a few different revenue sources there. So it qualifies for the tanginess of how this comes across. Overall, you can see that we do have that revenue in there showing a slight decrease primarily because of the ARPA funding no longer being a consideration in 2024 for the airport. The, and then you can also see as it relates to airport administration, maintenance, fire rescue utilities, environmental and non-partmetal miscellaneous are all within a good budget there, nominal small increases. Obviously a very healthy ending fund balance for the airport, as you can see there too. So any questions on airport, we keep cruising. We'll talk about capital later as your reminder. Okay, thanks. All right. So moving into our enterprise funds as it relates to environmental sustainability and resilience. We have sustainability, which is part of the trash and recycle fund. Looking at the trash and recycle funds, we have revenues decreasing and refuse revenues. We also have the budget is almost doubled for the cost of recycled diversion. In 2024, they're going to continue to cultivate commercial businesses, research ways to reduce cost collections, continue to evaluate opportunities to improve daily route efficiencies for city growth, engage and educate the community to increase the diversion rates, explore outreach to minimize contamination in the recycle stream. Rooting those diversion rates from the landfills aligned with a statewide goal of 35% diversion by 2026 and 45% by 2036. Explore new options for resource recovery, work by making public drop off area cost neutral and continue to offer multiple recycling, recycling options for the public. And so here you can see we are showing how those revenues are coming in versus the expenditures as well as there are no transfers for 2024 included to the trash recycle fund for capital. And then you can see some of those ending fund balances in there, the larger variance in there does have to do with those diversions. So. Any questions on this one? All right. That takes it through the enterprise line. We're going to take a moment just to talk about our diversity, equity and inclusion. So in this budget, this is all city goal. And so with the university equity inclusion, the floor responded program through police will continue. Credit for digital state prepared customers considerations, food utility rebate, translation services, public meeting door hangers, optics signage for ADA signs at bus stops, recruitment, so targeted recruitment to generate a broad pool about kids that would exist locally, looking at trying to have that profile match our local demographics, continuing the critical point cloud technology and the transportation buses. Translation for phone to texting defendants as an accessibility option, changing telephone based interpretation to in person with the certified court interpretation on a monthly basis and some use of language line as required for other languages. We do have the e-sitation from the police programs in the library to continue are the literary festival, art programming, children's programming, teen programming, summer reading programming, outreach to diverse. The Easter egg scramble accessibility, trying to make that accessible movies in the park. Disability picnic, ADA paddling, Buckley event. So having those ADA acceptable paths for our events that those mobility issues are able to attend. And then the golf tournament fundraiser for those few scholarships as well as the dance for extremely poor hockey programs and softball class as well. So. Questions? Right. Cruising through, moving on in capital. So for capital, we are going to start off with our 2005 open space parks and trails. These were the projects that were previously lent to city council in two different study sessions in August. And so the information about each of the projects is included in the budget book. So if there's any questions, we can certainly address those. We do have the department directors available for that consideration. As far as the sales tax, that obviously is going to mirror what we're projecting general fund, just different split out of that tax. And so there is that, but as when we're looking at the projects, this is something that our city manager asked us to include as part of the budget proposal. And what this is really showing is our project timelines and our expectations for how long it will take for the city to complete some of these projects.
Thank you for adding those five years. It gives a lot better idea of how the trends are going to be spread out over the next few years. I had before we got, it's just a question on what is the total dollar in capital projects?
Correct. All the funds.
Of course, all the funds are really.
So total capital projects, we are showing 92,291,020.
And then my follow up question would be, do you believe it is realistic to budget for 92 million capital projects? Which is 61 million if you take out the airport. If we are two, two years ago, I think we did six and a half, maybe five, we were budgeted for. And this year, if I were to open up, we're at about, I think it was eight million. Eight million dollars, 70 million. Yeah. Eight one, eight million. Do you expect that we complete this year? And then the target that we used to we should be rest assured that it's 92 or 61,000.
I would say that the staff that we worked on all of these budgets with does have a level of certainty that we are going to complete the projects now. For some of those are planned to straddle more than one year. I think, you know, we just that we just expect the modern sewer, that's a major priority. There's in this budget, a consideration to add with sign streets manager as well as utilities design manager to help the progress of those projects. You know, we, it is like we've mentioned, it's a challenging time, not just for us, but for many municipalities. As we're looking at still the continuation of some of these COVID impacts. So, you know, I, I have whole faith in our department directors that they're putting forward projects that they believe they can complete.
My, my alternative is based on track that goes through COVID before. We are getting close to realizing what we budgeted for. And not only is this volume of money, capital, but it's a significant decrease over the years as well. It seems that I, because I had been saying common last year.
Pretty similar to the money is taken, it wasn't spent in 2023 that we're just going to call reappropriation. Reappropriate, reappropriate in 2024. So it's not like we're reallocating new money for that capital permit. It's the amount of that money that we already agreed on as council that we're going to budget this for. That may be through their process. But hey, guys, we should probably do that. Then you carry it forward. So it's not like we're taking, you know, for smart 160, we're not taking like $2 million out of this year's CIP, which we allocated in 2023, the end of 2024. So we're counting for that in 2024 because we already reappropriated that money in 2023, 2024.
Well, where I'm going with this, maybe if you, launching these budgets, a lot of these budgets are committed because we have a contract, we sign contracts, we have to commit. Airports, but many budgets are not, we don't have a code, we don't have a contract. So they're just moving on every year, retiring of money, money that we could have used, for example, for the research, which is not a cost to nothing.
But then so those capital improvement projects, the CIP projects were money that the council said, we are going to spend this funding towards this project. So we can't just reappropriate that. I mean, it's, it's kind of going to process this, right?
And the 2005 sales tax cannot go to, to the EPC contract. Like that's also what is like so convoluted and this is the same conversation we had a month ago, same exact questions, same exact conversation. And then like you said, last year and the year before, in the same direction, just like last month. Devin, you talked about last month when we brought up the CID's and the same question was asked, that you guys have found new ways to do bidding and new ways to have more contractors on board. So hopefully we can be more successful. We still want to do these projects. Smart 160 trail, we need to show as a council, because I think we are committed to doing this project. I'm not willing to say, um, we don't have this on yet. Let's just take the 2005 open space task and let's pay for the EPC contract. That's down there. Okay. No. I think it's ridiculous to keep asking the same questions over and over. And you can't see the council's moving in this direction and you just want to cause problems. That's why I think you're, I saw the solution. If you're not actually.
An example that would be beneficial to change approaches is that the city parks break. If for parks and rail, we budget for 10 million, but we know we're completed because it's track. Maybe if we would say, oh, we have contracts for 5 million. Let's work on a whole bunch of more projects than not a five million. And as soon as we have something that we can afford. Let's work on a whole bunch of more projects than not a five million. And as soon as we have something that we can afford, whether it's outdoor swimming pool or a covered year round sports facility. As if we have an opportunity to spend that money for our community, let's do it. And instead of saying, these are the projects we identified, then it's not going to happen. We have track record. We can work on more projects and see what we actually can accomplish during the budget year. When we get appropriate money that we did not allocate yet, because there is no contract. We can appropriate anytime during twenty twenty four. And then we can make some real progress, not just by providing services and whatever is needed for our community or our community funds. But also in reducing our total fund balance to someone that's a bit more might appropriate to see.
Okay, don't, I don't disagree. I, I, by as one councilor, I would rather give direction to staff to say, hey, pursue this, because this is what the opportunity is, instead of like, hey, here's twenty projects, go chase them all, they'll give you money whenever there's a contract. Actually, I think it's going to be, they're going to be spending on wheels more often than not, because we haven't given them clear directions and clarity about what we want. So that's why I guess for me, like, we have this piece of work to say, we want open space acquisition, we want outdoor, we want small ones, because we've given the direction. Here's what we allocate towards it. So then commit your resources to that project. I, I'm worried that if we say, hey, don't, don't come revenue any money till you get a contract. It doesn't mean we can get a whole litany of things that we may not even die to this community, because we haven't given clear direction to staff.
And that just adds to the agents that you can add. You, you don't have to say we go wild on the sun. You can say we have ten million, we have five million, we have contracts for the other five million. We don't have to commit. We can say, these are the projects. But instead of saying five million, we say ten million dollar projects. And hopefully, hopefully, if we're lucky, we can do five million.
Well, I disagree with you as well. It's okay, because I would just suggest, uh, this process of, uh, to me, it makes sense, because we have our F A T board going through these. They're showing a prioritization of projects that, that the F A T board has committed to. And then it comes to council and council commits to. So we are through this process showing a prioritization of projects. The reasoning from which council has not, or the staff has not met the timelines, projected timelines are multifaceted, as you know. We just got proof of it. There, there's been supply chain issues. It's not to say that they are still not going to face additional challenges going forward. If they continue to face additional challenges going forward, um, then we can reappropriate those funds for the next year for whatever reasons. If those projects still remain a priority project. So the process to me is a good one. We're prioritizing through our processes what projects we want to commit to. Staff is making concerted efforts to improve the process such that we can try to make better, uh, you know, meet our goals better. Um, but it's also difficult, as we see in every single project we're looking at right now. When you look at the airport and you get, you know, three million dollar higher cost estimates. So these things are real, but we still are trying to proceed for with the priority projects. And again, if we don't make those councils and future councils can re-prioritize those into future, I mean, years, it's an easy process.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. The F A T only evaluates the funding source for capital projects. You don't have, prioritization comes from staff. And they look at how are these projects going to be funded?
But they're, they're, they're agreeing with the, uh, the staff's recommendations and they're reviewing staff's recommendations to provide a recommendation to council. And so. And.
And they're, they're charging publication.
Correct. And they're engaging in public. So it's this process that I appreciate. Um, and, and I, I, I also ask the question, um, you know, you aren't the only one that has asked that question. Are, is council, is staff confident that they are going to be able to accomplish this very, uh, you know, a, a, a big list of projects? Um, as, as, as residents of the community, I think residents hope that they can. And we're hopeful that we can, because these are great projects that we'd like to see pushed through. Um, but it, there are things that get in the way at times and, um, it's just life. And we adjust by COVID and supply chain issues, by unexpected difficulties that we had to, that every municipality had to respond to. So we're still kind of working through some of that, I think.
Are there any questions on projects that are included in the two thousand five park, open space and trail?
On the smart one sixty, so we just forwarded the, I think, the date of the pickleball over to twenty twenty four. So do we add to that?
We have Sarah, I'm afraid, Scott, available.
So we, yes, we, and by the transfer to the, uh, we can't convert to the fourth words. Um, but you're still working the primary order of smart sixteen to get access and to have access to that, that part of the work we have received. Um, the three million dollars that we have is all funded. It's a starting, we're going to do the surveys, it's like, it's like.
Any other questions? Moving on to the two thousand fifteen parks and open side model. Um, again, apologies for the smallness of this. Um, but you can see, um, this is the, um, projects that were included as well as their, um, uh, the information's budget book. Um, and so I'm going to go to this one, it'll be a little bit easier to see possibly. Um, but this is our project timeline. So you can see some that are, um, going out into twenty twenty five. Um, as far as how long it will take to complete some of that. And so are there any questions from council on any of the projects that are listed in the two thousand fifteen parks and open side model? Yes.
Okay, so I am still very concerned about the downtown next steps. And since, uh, Bliss just mentioned that at some point we're able to revise our strategic goals and plans for capital projects. I'm wondering if we put that up in, in the word, one of the study sessions, how uh, go about eliminating the downtown next steps, since we don't have a firm cost on that. At this point, we're just, uh, going right away by community development or something. We have an idea what's under the, uh, password. And if the time one of the next steps was envisioned, it was determined. And when you did the surveys, I studied them to many people who, who even know the survey on the the internet to do outreach about my project with the compass. And a lot of people, they still don't want the next steps projects to, uh, develop business for like ten years. And I know the fire department does not want the bulb outs, because it cuts down, um, their response times. Like a bird having, not being wanted to buy house fully equipped, that are trying to squeeze through a small, uh, turn in. So how do we go about that?
I would, I would say that there's.
Like, no, I'm asking, um, our administration, how do we go about changing that?
Three council votes.
And how do we get on the jet?
Really, council votes, so that probably could have a new business when you have the agenda versus the new business items. Uh, that would be in time to bring up the, to have a discussion to remove downtown's next steps from the capital improvement.
Right. And how can we get that better in the strategic plan?
Strategic plan is going to be, uh, is broader. Um, it goes up to a higher type of, uh, goals. So it isn't limited to like the list of all of these projects. Uh, so I mean, there's things in which you would say, you know, they become a little subjective at times if people get, you know, multimodal connectivity, it would be something, in fact, infrastructure, this would fit under that. But then it's something the council at times, the staff, for example, if we say this fits under the strategic plan and the thought process that we think the council is, uh, had. And the council then comes back and says, yes, you have so the right word? No, that isn't what they contain. And they either vote yes or no. So the bottom line to remove this is it's going to take three votes from the council to say, remove this from the C I P plan.
Okay, could I get that in memo?
Uh, sure.
Okay, thanks.
I have a, a follow up question on downtown next steps, if I may. So, I, I'm not really sure where we're going with downtown next steps. And I share some of the concerns that council is asking. Especially with what the final concept, because the current concept is not one that's going to lead. And at the same time, we have in this budget, I just throw some numbers here that we have on there as well. And we have, you stand already downtown phase one, in four, thousand, that quarter ninety two. We have, uh, downtown phase two, this is over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have downtown next steps, six hundred and seven hundred block A C favorites for four hundred and eighty thousand over two years. We have downtown next steps water for two point six million over five years. And we have downtown next steps store for five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars over four years. And we have downtown next steps for best improvement for two hundred and forty seven thousand dollars over two years. It's like we opened the faucet, we have no oversight, we don't have the cost, so we're looking at spending, but that's down in downtown.
But hopefully, we see now like water replacement in downtown instead of calling it next steps.
Well, I, I'm just saying, let's call that. And then we'll just, we'll just make the sidewalk better, whether you replace the sidewalk or whether we're better with the water.
Well, it's, it's like, but we're, we're starting on all this consulting design. And we have always spent one hundred thousand. And the council.
Dot org slash notify me.
And that is the first phase, the few phases that will probably be one or two now. And I see five, five line items that are all associated with next steps that very few people are aware of of all the additional costs that are coming to them just for these, and then the execution.
Just call it simple for what it actually is, that's how the downtown's next steps, to like, you know, capital, let's call a water replacement in downtown. You know, I mean, let's just call it that. We don't have to call downtown's next step, but because we're doing it in conjunction with, we talked about this being two separate projects. Downtown's next step, we have revitalized downtown through, through aesthetic, um, and we have a street, downtown accessible. Then we also had an infrastructure piece that is, that is just as probably more expensive, right? I'm not basically reading with you. I'm just saying. Well, unless it's like all this, because then we get, we're getting hung up on downtown's next step, because we have all these things that I see downtown's except, let's just call something else. If our terms is called, you know, the catalog project.
It's just the nature is to have an insight, a clear insight, how much are we looking at spending on downtown next steps? All of those, what, sure, everything that we, so we're talking about.
Well, that's what we're doing is, is, we're doing these phases and designs phases to figure that out. You have to do that first. That's part of the process.
But there's, there's five different, it's not just, this one.
But it's a cost savings to do them all together. So that way it is streamlined, we're closing down things together, it's not an emergency. It's, uh, you know, so there is a cost savings realized by bringing all this stuff together.
There's going to be some water sewer streets in twenty fifteen, there's two.
I think it's, yeah.
There's two, I mean, just as a, I think, portion of this. Make sure it's clear, you know, we did have a study session, uh, in which, uh, the consultant, I believe, right, Sir. Uh, came and presented, kind of papered up data of where we were at in this project. Uh, I understand that it is not the unanimous support of the project, uh, but we're moving forward with the direction in which this is the process that goes through it, right? As staff goes, we, we take them to the F A T board in twenty fifteen, they make their recommendations, we continue to move forward. If the council at any time asks three votes, then they can stop. It stops. And I think that's the biggest part in this process and in which we're working at is the authority at this time of the city council wants it to continue to go. So it goes, because that's how we work in this government. You get up three, three, say go, go. And so I want to make sure that as this is going through, that we understand this is kind of the process and what you go through. It's not like we're just running off and just for people who are saying, I'm not saying you're intending to mean that. I just, for people, we're not letting staff be running off and doing this on our own. We are checking with advisory boards and councils. And just at this point, it's a, what seems to be three, two in support of the project to move forward. The way that changes, and I'll get that memo to you, because I think it's that three councilors have to come together in a meeting and as part of, I'd like to say, stop, uh, on this project.
My question is not going forward, but it is to start out with a very clear goal. All the costs that we are currently planning, spending on the random next steps, because they are split into five different positions. And they involve all the studies, so you need to the dashboard and then to compare it to.
So. It was at the council's request, if we had that study session, I think, a month and a half ago or two months, if we had that come out.
So Sarah was, um, and done then, and, uh, a consultant presented.
Justin was there.
Justin was there. There is, I was talking sewer water cost and you have the same question at that meeting.
Yeah, I asked for a better understanding of the cost. And to me, I, I'm pulling up, I'm sure nobody knows it. It's, it's the amount that I'm looking at. It was probably five million. And I don't even know what the actual cost will be for the structure. It doesn't really matter.
Maybe during a one on one, if you don't understand it, so you can.
I, I understand.
For, for, we're good, I, we're good. Um, there is, uh, I don't know if Jose or someone said it at one meeting one time and it was like, actually very important. Um, you stand by what you believe, you advocate for what you think is wrong and, or what you want to change. And then once the vote goes and you realize where we're going, you like get behind the project and try to make it as good as possible. Um, because if you're just constantly digging your heels in, we're going forward, right? We're going forward with random next steps with the three counselors here at this moment. And so how can we make it better? If it's the bulb outs and then that's like what you're really concerned about, then maybe that's where we take a look and go, oh, well, let's bring the fire department, let's talk to them and see if that is the, a piece of this we can make better. We're not, like, I'm not supposed to.
Well, I don't think you sense that anybody wants to make it better.
But I do, but that's the thing, that that's what's unfortunate, I don't want to stop it. And I'm not going to stop it, because I, I love the project. But honestly, we.
About worrying about moving downtown, building the businesses, having it open, what's.
I don't think.
Everything's subjective.
Sure.
That's where you guys go, oh, it's subjective. Now, Brian Asko was the member about the process to move to Lundy.
Sure.
And that's pretty straightforward.
True.
I am against going over down steps, because we have no idea how much it's going to cost. And plus, we also have to ask for money to go ahead and do renovations on the nine harbor. You know, it's a big, big ask, you know, throwing away five million dollars on nine, not uh, downtown next step. So they're asking for, you know, fifty million for the diner or building. The general public is going to say, hey, do we have too much back here?
Well, some, some people might think of this as, others think, um, you know, and, you know, addressing infrastructure needs and, um, widening sidewalks, making them more pedestrian friendly, making them, you know, ADA accessible, providing safety for our community. Some people think that that's really important. We have to figure out over time how to fund a lot of projects, including civic center. And if we decide to upgrade the infrastructure for downtown at some point that is, I think, over seventy years old, they have to figure out how to do that too. Um, and so these are just, it's just a different perspective. You know, everybody has different priorities of what they want to see happen. But right now, Jessica's point is a good one, which is, you know, we are moving forward. And so you could think about, you know, exactly what she's saying, how can we make this a better process that may be more, you say that a lot of people don't like it. We also know and we heard from Tim, but a lot of people do like it too. Um, and want it and like just for this beautification of downtown and wider streets and our sidewalks on Park. Um, have you ever, I don't know if you ever, I spent the time strolling around in a wheelchair downtown and it was like I was taking my leg in my hands. It was so difficult. You should all try it someday. I think just one of you, like, you know, like, uh, as well, I'm sorry, I'm open to listening to idea, like, I'm more.
It's good to know.
Well, but like, I'm wondering no next steps, but if there's items or parts in it, we can find that make you happy. And it's not going to be me not supporting it, but there could be a common ground, like, bring that up and like, and let's, let's look at it and see if there's.
I have seen that there is common ground at this point. My major concern, when we lost millions of dollars down the hole.
Well, I don't, I works in no value, it's down the hole. I think we need a revitalization of our sidewalks, downtown accessibility, beautification. Well, I don't, I works to know if I can stay on the whole, I think we need a revitalization of our sidewalks, downtown accessibility, beautification. I feel like it's needed and so that's where I'm going, but again, like, like you're concerned about full downs or you're concerned about this, like. Yes, let's talk about it.
Okay, let's talk about it. See, that sounds much better than, um, what next was. Was envisioned back through COVID and that's what people are still wanting. Uh, what that, that vision was to turn it into a walking mall and just have.
But that, uh, that's kind of, it's only a month ago, it's not, and so if people's bringing that up constantly, you're keeping that as the narrative. Instead of going forward with what it actually is. And that's what I was talking to someone just the other day, I was like, you keep bringing that up. That has been shut down two years ago, we decided no walk pedestrian mall, it will never be in our council's life. That's not what any of us want, it will not be a walking mall, period, it's not going to be. And so we shouldn't even talk about that anymore.
Well, then it needs to get out, or is it that?
Exactly. And, but it's not even the same. Like, if you look at their downtown stuff that she just presented us, there was no walking pedestrian mall, not one time did she bring that up.
Okay, so let's talk this, this won't, don't, you know, keep, um, bringing the issue and possibly, uh. We could have one on one.
That'd be great.
And then we'll come out with. Some kind of public announcement that this is what it is, because people are still confused about.
We, we didn't do that in our last study session, though we.
You know, we had many forums that's going to house, right? Then we have a, a, quite a few and.
And what were those?
I just didn't study such content.
A month ago, she said it was. Well, what you have to do, we get it out there to let people know, people don't always come to our interviews.
So I, I feel like that's part of like our job and it's like, yeah, you know, like, I, you know, um, Tom's job is getting out that information. But I, I mean, when was the last time you talked about a pedestrian mall often? It was when you did the open house in the state building or whatever that is. Two years ago was, and then it was shut down at that meeting. So we have not spoken as a city about pedestrian mall in over two years. It's, uh, people want to call like, keep. It negative, like, bring it up.
All right, well, let's have a one on one, we'll get the information out. And it's a good idea that they can avoid the two issues.
I just want to make sure, the one on one we're talking about is just an educational session in which we're able to have staff committed and answer some of the questions you have on this project.
Right, plus any, uh, financial, uh. Any expenditures that were, uh, spent on the next step project.
Okay, I absolutely just want to make sure that for those that are listening with one on ones, they're purely educational for counselors to get information. About certain projects that they would like to give more information on, or just not going, or then it goes on to that part. And be happy to, to do that and have Sarah, uh, and the thing, plan, also Savannah, maybe.
Savannah.
Kind of yard there and kind of go, any counselor during the one on ones that would like that and just do an educational purpose, like, here's where we've been and where we're at. And, uh, go from there, that sounds good?
Good, thank you for doing that. Let's move forward.
So twenty nineteen streets.
Good question. After phase two is. And so there is a face tree too. Is the design.
Sarah, do you know?
That's the question. So we had page one, downtown next step stage one, which is going. You have the face two for four hundred and fifty, there's a face two.
Yeah, so there's three design based, based on the budget, sure, the estimates on that, what was I?
Wouldn't it be beneficial because you're going to find it. Would it be beneficial to have a?
In the budget?
Well, in the final, I'm gross out, I think until, I cannot.
Yes, two years, so, uh, January twenty four through, yeah, twenty five. And some of that.
No, they're all twenty twenty five. Right, these, so these projects have already been appropriated, this is what we're talking about for the funding, so they can create the project. I think we need to move on, because Lydia, you're leading it too, and none of us want to stay here to support, it's the guy to get you this situation.
Twenty nineteen streets, um, again, I'm going to jump to the next slide, um, the revenues are reflective of. Again, the same forecast that we previously presented, um, so for our project timeline. You can see what projects are included as part of, um, the twenty nineteen streets. Um, so any, any questions on any of those projects?
Can you go back, Kate, just one sheet, uh, anyway, and this happens on. Four to half, there's a project that's called no project, and in this case, it's, um, two hundred thousand. Proposed twenty twenty four is two hundred, it's just.
We can better delineate what that is, so that's the, um, transfer from the two thousand nineteen sale tax into the general time for streets. Operation maintenance.
So it's not moving capital budgets into inflation expense.
That is the, um.
Part of the two thousand nineteen can be used for maintenance and that's the transfer out of the twenty nineteen to general fund and streets to do the streets maintenance. That's the one we talked about earlier in the budget that the council had directed to drop that by two hundred thousand over.
Right.
Three years, so that's just that part of it, moving out of twenty nineteen streets, uh, to the maintenance side of streets and parks.
The no project sign. Uh, sheets, is, is that always the same?
So, um, this occurs when we hold these down for a couple of go, um, this is one of the items that we're being officially not to change that or be a different object. Both, I mean, it would, we'd still say no project in this format, um, but this is where these button summaries that we'd be able to show you. Two thousand nineteen streets contribution for maintenance, um, is how we're ready to, uh, better let those. Uh, so that was the one that started out at about one point one million in twenty twenty two, adopted at four hundred twenty five thousand in twenty three. Down to two hundred thousand in twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
But, yeah, we can certainly.
Two thousand five, I think, the same.
Two thousand five, I mean, but fifteen is the same, yeah.
There's still nothing for the fifteen year sidewalk program in twenty twenty four, are we not, do we not anymore?
Um, so we don't have Allison here, um, or Keith, but I think, um, when we're looking at strategic angle areas. There was consideration about seeing the sidewalk district could be not effective.
Okay.
Um, so I think that team is working on putting together plans.
It was under infrastructure.
Now.
Joey, you have a.
Yeah, I think. Well, there's been, there's been a lot of things that I'm not able to go about this fifty fifty sidewalk project. We've got to get the sidewalk district involved as well, the help, um, some. So they're in the process of, um, going out and doing some more research on this and how it will proceed, uh, with the fifty fifty sidewalk program in the future as well.
And then the alley, um. The alleyway design, maybe, is there nothing in it? And are they all designed and now we just have to actually do them? Is that right?
Yes, there are some that are in the design process and some that are actually being done from speed, uh, so. As far as there is some future design and they're after the. Uh, uh, it's dynamic right now, so we need to put a future out design in there, so. Um, as far as the allies go, uh, there is some, uh, some that have been set aside from those, uh, reconsiderations and design work on. I had to have Kate and Allison speak more, because I was just waiting for, uh, a little bit, just to remind of that what's happening, uh, I think.
Thank you. Um, and then also too, um, something that Allison was working on was looking at, um, ways to kind of break out some of those projects, so. So why this list is quite a bit longer looking, um, but there is two hundred thousand dollars in there for alleys.
Okay, I just want to make sure it goes with sidewalks and alleyways, if you're having a hard time actually getting those done, and I think it's important since I didn't know. There was a change, if we get them done.
She does have three hundred thousand as well, alley, alley drainage structures.
Awesome, thank you.
Need the project timeline, any other questions on the nineteen streets that we. Try to get here for council?
Just what, do that alley to the problem alley down at eight street somewhere?
No, the south side, it's the, makes that hard.
The one that.
Eighty three, no, do you know?
The eight street alley? Yeah, so I believe that was actually scheduled, probably going to, um, construction, make sure, I think there's this design already. Um, but that is one of the others that has been looked at, and, uh, I think there's some design regardless of status we speak right now. Like I said, outside of K, it's been a speed wall map, but I think that is one that is, um, scheduled for in the future.
We can add that for our follow up list too. Allison. General fund capital, um, so within general fund capital, um, this is where a portion of the county funded. Two fifty, two fifty one is listed, um, I think that is still pending an integrated law agreement with. Apod County, um. Weyland County, okay, um, and so we'll see that poll, um, in there as far as they amended as well as the proposed. Because once that is contracted, we need it in both of those places, um. We do have some I N T, um, uh, considerations in here for a. Um, a unit and a switch, um, the common threads project is in here as well, um, and then there's some storm drain projects. Question of general. Alright, water capital. Um, so we do have that transfer from the water, uh. Uh, water operating fund to the water capital fund, um, as well as project timelines reflective of. Um, schedule, is he available to answer any questions?
Two million gallon tank, how many years?
Maybe a big date years next year.
Yeah. This is an example, I guess, for. To realize that we tie up that money the last ten years.
I, I don't know if it's been in the budget for the past ten years, so I don't know if we budgeted ten years every year on it or not. I don't have time for that. We have, uh, we signed contract for design, uh, with B H I in twenty fourteen. And that, uh, not thing we worked on by staff, uh, we sense that that probably could happen. Oh, we're going on design this year and then moving into construction next year. Thank you. I do want to mention, I don't know if it's part of the budget, but legal department is working on issues that. Um, may affect your budgets some point in the future, back in nineteen eighty four, the city of Austin did a map of its water rights and property. To identify the potential of that happening again, we've been exploring, doing some releases to make sure we don't lose those rights. Those acres, properties and owns, um, again, I don't think that's directly related to the, like, this probably, it could be. Um, and I'm not fully through my research on how to advise you guys what to do. But.
Moving on to sewer capital, um. Again, a transfer from the sewer operating funds of one point four, um. Going the projects in the timeline, I did want to make one note on this timeline, um, that. Sewer project, uh, the twenty sixteen sewer project is listed here, but it, um, that was something that. Was included as part of the August meeting, but it's since been pulled. Um, so just to help the council. Any questions on sewer projects? Airport capital, it's got a big year next year, um, so this one's a little bit different and then you can see, um, there is federal aviation grants. That support, um, ninety one point eighteen percent of all capital projects. And so that is nineteen point seven million of that, and so, um, you can see what the revenues are in there. As well as the, um, projects, so thirty one million. For in airport projects for twenty twenty four. Um, just continuing with the healthy budget balance for, uh, airport as a whole. And, um, there is the timeline, um, showing when those projects will start and events. Any questions for Tony on airport? Any other council questions on airport?
There is under sewer fund capital projects, one, the first one listed is sewer project. And that's an amended budget for twenty twenty three of three hundred thousand actual. And there's zero for twenty twenty four. As you see here, but for twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, we have one point five million, uh, bites. Can you explain that?
Sure, uh, your project number twenty sixteen is, uh, similar to what was waterline project. Ten thirty three project number that we're carrying over each year to do what is essentially operation and maintenance. Um, so for twenty sixteen sewer project, each year we do manual relining. We do just general operation and maintenance on sewer systems and we draw some of this capital project. Uh, it is my position, Devon's position, that we include that to the operation and maintenance and that was resolved for this year. Or for twenty twenty four, but it hasn't resolved for twenty five and moving forward. So those will all go to zero, all their twenty sixteen will be part of this, and the O N M budget will be increased by ninety three. To, uh, take care of the, you know, operating.
That makes sense, because it's more of an operational. Thank you for that.
Okay, we are on to special revenues. So we're going to start up under portability and economic, economic opportunity with our housing innovation fund. Um, so in our housing innovation fund, um, we are looking to, um, increase deployment of housing fund balances. Here workforce housing, um, units through partnership with landlords, developers, nonprofits and others. Um, there's a lot of, uh, future playing consideration in this division, um, for twenty twenty four. Which is looking at opportunities for multi-generational mixed income, advanced housing related code amendments. Um, related to the promotion of workforce housing, um, analysis of the twenty eighteen housing plan to identify any updates. With market considerations, um, partnership with other organizations to explore funding options for additional revenue streams. Advance the housing accelerator program, um, dissipate with key stakeholders, work with regional stakeholders to encourage opportunities for. For a level post, the three spring village two in other areas, establish, um, web based housing dashboard with relevant housing information. Um, finalize the fair share program, seek adoption and implementation of new programs, finalize disputes, housing compliance agreement. Continue the R H A efforts, uh, continue supportive of U R A's efforts to incentivize workforce housing. Work with U R A, county, state and others, uh, to evaluate publicly owned property for the land of housing rehabilitation. And of course, track that with funding opportunities, um, to ensure the city is positioned to compete for those funds. So this housing innovation fund, um, at a fund level, um, so you can see that inter fund transfer. That is related to the American Rescue Plan, um, funding, um, ARPA funds. So we have through the end of twenty twenty four to contract those funds, um, so there's three hundred fifty nine thousand dollars in there for that. Um, you can also see the different, um. if you support the housing fee and free springs fees, um as far as those revenues and then uh the expenditures that are listed um below as well as the and the changing fund balance, we have that giant here, if there's any questions as well.
Just long term, do you have any idea what's gonna happen between twenty twenty five? All these things, since we don't have the.
Please like to do.
Would like for apple clip?
Um.
I don't know, I just didn't know.
So council earlier this year did um amend to give three point two million dollars to the housing innovation fund from the general fund. Um obviously Scott could probably better talk about the long term strategy um for funding. Um but with the ARPA funding um in twenty twenty four and really twenty three, um it's quite, it's quite less than the other funding pieces there.
Becomes a decision with the council in regards to general fund funding to subsidize the fund. When this was done, this was done a few years ago, um it was done in response to ARPA funding as well as the council wanting to what do we do with the ARPA funding, one of the recommendations and stuff, that was a housing uh division and so we went with that, understanding that at one point that ARPA funding would uh would dry up and then we have to make sure to see A, are we sustainable on our own and if not, uh the only other option would be a general contribution to to go through. Seeing the numbers, looks like there might be a strategy where we can still continue without that, but anytime you look at housing anyways, if you're gonna want to hit bucks with the cash, that's a own opportunity to sell.
It's been a lot of community conversations too about these first. Uh Eva is also speaking. She's done a lot of great work looking at Devon, trying to prioritize getting that ARPA out of first, that's most critical. So that's the first tranche we're really trying to get out. Then we have transfer fees from twenty minutes, please screenings, we have fair share fees that are not as time sensitive. So we can hold on to those as a great opportunity as well as the transfer from the general. We can use as opportunities for that. This was one thing, if I could just pass this out, it's very much a first draft. Um but in response to the last study session, there was a question about current projects. This is just a real high level summary of kind of the top housing related projects that we're focused on. We envision this being sort of transformed into a dynamic online app. Yeah. I know that. You guys can shoot. Um so this is going to be a way that we really need this information out and keep it real time. So this shows eight different projects representing three hundred and twenty five units of workforce housing. That's not including three springs village two, which is a lot of units of market rate, units of housing. That would kind of skew the number. Of the hundred units, but that is a big priority right now. Made a lot of progress on that. It's just gives a quick snapshot of numbers of units, the A M I range we're looking at and then the resources of the way that we're contributing to those projects, so again, kind of a first draft, working draft. This was in response to.
I I think it's really good to have it over here, it shows that we're definitely more this year. Fire and visually like this is great. I I had a question for you, well, this is firstly comment, what the three point two million of transfers general fund to the housing innovation funds is just yet another example uh how we as a council tie up money that is not being spent in twenty twenty three, which could have been spent and and save us money like the least burdened. Uh I shouldn't really guess, I think that is just unfortunate that we make those decisions.
Um if you want, just to clarify. The way that that's that's allowed us to engage with housing developers to show that we do have resources committed, council has made that decision. Just ups our ability to to have those conversations and with real terms about what resources we have. There is some benefit to having.
Is that people to the ARPA funding?
That is a joke.
Oh, that's true.
That was a your opportunity to reserve, but to file projects to continue and to be able to be aggressive in housing.
I was saying in the.
I I, as you remember, we had a discussion, the reference and the forecast, this was probably six months ago. And that was a public meeting, I think it was in the library following. And then we had a one on one uh meeting where I in more detail explained that I feel that those escalated revenue numbers are somehow very disaligned with the information that council has gotten on prior occasions. One of them is the uh three no three weeks transfer fee estimate. And somewhat more than I'm suggesting is about fifty four or something, so very, you know, average. And the three springs, which is I think half a percent transfer fee and with the amount of housing there, I want to assume that there is a large one and I think that this is one of the revenues is when you have a way of feeling actually you're not sure that that's revenue, it should be revenue as well as expense. So if we look at this, in my opinion, some numbers seem, see, you know, yeah, actuals. And but also there are certain uh revenue equivalents, I guess, that are not showing them. And I'm just wondering if you got any follow up on that because the real number should be a lot higher as well as expenses in some cases.
Have the conversation, we're gonna share that information about how we projected it. Sometimes that can come in higher, other times it comes in lower and so we do projections for averaging.
So where did, when you have a fee that you waived, where does it show up? There's one project, so I remember the press, one, they have a fee looping five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That already doubles more than three hundred and eighty five forecasted combination of transfer fees and housing fees.
Maybe the first question I think was about waivers, I don't know exactly, some trade, both transfer fees cannot be waived. Fair turf fee cannot be waived, has to be um accounted or in some other way, so I don't know exactly.
So the project near press where the fee loop payments, they chose the fee loop payment. So I was thinking exactly. Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And at the time I said, well, sometimes these fee loops are difficult over time, multiple years. And I my argument is you only have three thousand people. Stage from design starts with say half of them unless are actually purchased, so you have a fee associated with uh maybe something build housing, four thousand, I don't think they need, but there's still a big chunk of it. Being built, so why don't we see something that is, I example, if five hundred and eighty thousand, that project is zero.
So yeah, exactly what you said, sometimes that's broken up over multiple years. So if you do an annual estimate, you know, it's gonna be less than that total. And then sometimes we have no projects, if they, you move, you put that number to zero. So there's a wide variation. Um we were financed, looked at actuals, looked at projections, come up with a number that we have.
So if a, if a builder builds actual four thousand, the dollar will go, if you would have made a fee say five hundred thousand dollars, would that show up anywhere? No.
It would not show up as revenue expense because they're actually providing the the outcome that we desire.
So if you look at your needs, instead of extra budget for housing, wanna make sure you are accomplishing the goal and add so many four thousand units. If everybody builds the four thousand, you just have, then you.
That's why we're all such a tricky lot, like it's about numbers of units, it's not just money. Yeah, that's very much.
If we, we keep going, we're.
Yeah, no, so my, my.
You're taking.
I started as a topic, I did conclude, I I will conclude that I I find this uh budget forecast of revenue uh distorted.
Okay, that's, thank you. You're welcome. Let's, let's move on. I can keep us on track, it's highly significant, point of emphasis on your schedule.
Oh, okay. Alright. Okay, just like you said, that one, thank you for everything here. Uh Drago renewal partnership, so again, we have Scott available, um this is showing the sale tax tip as well as the property tax tip interest for revenues and then broken out um by the expenditures and so um any question on the Durango renewal partner?
I think, I think the only thing I would like to see at a certain point is uh is the expenses we have here are bound to consultants for perhaps this to specific business owners or property owners within a renewable area. Um and I, at a certain point, I would really like to see if we're doing something that affects work in this one.
Well, um I actually, the grants are a huge benefit, you missed the meeting yesterday. Um but we did provide two additional grants to two different companies yesterday that were um really, that are going to be remarkable uh revitalization projects for our community in two very needed areas. Van Burger and down by the riverfront by the power of science center. Um but I was actually, the question's different, is, which I'm not seeing, where are those grant for twenty twenty four?
We're sitting on their only track.
Okay, other extract it, okay. So is the budget for those three sixty three for twenty twenty four?
Um I believe it's two fifty or two seventy five.
Okay.
This for the Midtown people.
Midtown people, okay.
Will that be the last year in Midtown? No, it'll continue for whatever, twenty five years.
Twenty five. Uh we did have a U R A board meeting. Yesterday, we provided some information about um fees to establish U R A and gravity generated, so we'll.
Yeah. So that was a, that was a great meeting, yeah.
Thanks.
Alright, moving on to nine one one communications, um this is our new fund this year. Um we've been working with user agencies, well, Platte County, during the fire protection district, Mayfield. Um some of the other smaller um action districts that uh we manage the dispatching for. Um and so um you'll see the reason why the agencies had asked for us to break out this one separately was so that um they are being built off the budget and so that moving forward, we would be able to develop a fund balance for these capital needs at the nine one one communication center, um there's a lot of need at that facility. Um we do have data fail here as well, to answer any questions and the chief of course can, but um as it relates to some of the changes in the budget, um so we're looking to implement some compensation packages to aid in addressing recruiting and retention challenges. Um expanding operational job positions to ensure service levels are maintained through uh focus strategies. Um beginning development. This is a paper.
And what we did see is we took them turns and we crammed them in between the number there, so there's one, twenty two, thirty, thirty. Now over here, we make fecal people. And depending upon the shape of that little church right there, we can do with big boobs or guts or butts a long length.
Some are black foxes. I don't think I did that, that's not making a.
Down, I get excited when I see.
Yeah, it was ever at Kearney, you make this on.
I can keep going, I I'll try to drop over.
Start this up here.
Being an administrative associate position, um two or nine one one centers, we're looking to add um core positions total, um call picker position to meet the high demand call volumes that allow dispatch personnel to focus on life agency safety. Um and functions relating to responsible, uh probably additional positions for a G I S to concentrate hours basically on the lines and national emergency standards and then sorry, deploying psychological evaluations as part of the hiring process, since this is arguably a best practice. Sorry, I'm talking too much today. Um strategically considerations is implementing a compensation package to aid in recruiting retention challenges. Expanding operational job positions to ensure service levels are maintained. Add, um I already talked about the different positions that we're looking to do. Um and at that point, I'll just turn over any questions and let you talk, if there is any.
Are you guys, are there some questions? They turned over now, nothing.
Be able to ask me, sorry. Roger, so in front of council, you have several Rogers tax proposals. Before we get into those larger tax proposals for council determination, um I did want to highlight that we've been working with the Durango on the marketing um piece of it and so as far as that marketing component, um we have agreed to let them uh come up with the projections for what their respective marketing um larger tax to be, um so we do have that, that budgeted amount, um you can see through there too that we have the amount for transit as well as arts and culture, um the council determination amount of four hundred and twenty three thousand one thirty and then the administration before that, um with uh obviously those deferred revenues no longer being part of the twenty four um budget there, but just wanted to discuss that and I'm gonna turn it over to Elliot um Fitz and he's gonna talk a little bit about what those larger tax proposals are in front of you. Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you again, Evan. So larger tax proposals, uh we put the, the staff put these proposals together as part of our towards um budgeting for outcomes. Um we really wanted to show what we'd be doing with the bonds, um so that is the secondary packet that was handed out to you today and to be prior to this meeting. Uh so those go pretty in depth on what the projects are, what they intend to accomplish, what the financial impacts are. Um and impact on doing projects. Um and to give a brief overview of a, um just going through these in the order that we received them, um so there's no priority given here, it's just separate order that we received them from under this into this packet. Um we did have an E V rebate program that was uh implemented last year, this year it is, it uh is being requested to be expanded. Um it was a great success last year, um with all of the bonds anticipated to be used by the end of the year and most of the bonds already being used through the date. Um there was a request for ready dividers uh in a photo type uh grown package, um P D of these two, um as it relates to Rogers tax, it's a weakness. Oh, but they um they advance security and safety of all of the other benefits and community events for Rogers tax, there's pretty good reason to have them in here um to supplement um some of the things the P D does at those events. Um and again, it will be tried to show what they, what they impact is by including that. Um for the art installations, that is a line item that is, that is already accepted by Rogers tax, so um the community, the creative community commission in tandem, uh community development department is proposing two art installations. Um one uh in conjunction with Snyder Park, um revital and enhancements that are going on with Pickleball. Um and one that is in conjunction with some of the rehabilitation, rehabilitation that's going on the server. Um and for transit. Um and for transit, uh there's two proposals for transit, one to continue the free summer transit that was uh very popular in the summer. Um and one for free summer party that was also very popular in the summer. Um and as council races through these proposals, I will say that uh based on our revenue projections for the council determination. We can fund all of the proposals if we do have a ready dividers um from the P D, so. Um and that is one of the options they lay out in the proposal. Um if we if we want to do the whole already divider, then we'll need to make some choices on. Which other ones may not have some priority, um but if we did have them already providers, we could fund all of them based on her projections. Um so that I guess I would I would open it up to questions. I would do the objects that we had listed here.
What did we fund last year? We funded like um. E-bikes or the P D, the Chapman Hill skates?
Uh Chapman Hill skates. We did a twenty five thousand dollar program for uh the E bike rebate programs that was here and it's being expanded. Um.
Did you guys get uh grant funding for the rest of the bikes?
Yeah, and um that is a good good point for the E bike program. Um the request this year is for fifty thousand. Last year it was twenty five thousand. And since uh putting this presentation together, uh we have found out that there is additional grant funding. Uh available, we still have to apply for it. We're not, it's not guaranteed or anything yet. Um just like there was last year, there could be potentially matching bugs, so there could be a multiplier effect.
So if he said, yes, we want to be bike program again, and if you did get the matching funds, would we get it back to council determination, say, hey, we have this might not work?
Uh probably not. We probably use the council determination funds and the and the grant funds, because the way the brand works is it's it's matching, it's.
Oh, got it. Okay.
We just expand.
So we get a hundred thousand instead of fifteen thousand?
Yeah, so we go with two multiplier.
I think this decision not work.
So when that happens, we need some. Agenda for next meeting.
Okay.
Can you guys leave it about it? Do you see if you have to be that hard yet, I don't feel like.
Right.
And then.
I mean, I'm definitely just more like.
It's less than what we have last week. Walk in the park.
I have one question. Because I think the transit, free transit is a fantastic problem. I imagine there's not quality feedback. Just wondering what we want, though, which is the general of having more free transit, encouraging. We want transportation and free parking, so it's like. Did you see we put nearly all of it?
Uh yeah, yeah, if uh if council made the decision to to do half of the already dividers, you know, you can fund nearly all of it. Uh the and I think the outcomes of free transit and free party are a little bit different in goals that we're trying to um. Achieve where free transit is trying to get more people to ride transit and have less emissions, less traffic in. And the world is less cars in Durango. Uh whereas free parking is trying to move some people from high congestion areas to low congestion areas of the park downtown. Um that's all time.
And that's for employees only, right? Sorry, downtown employees, is that for downtown employees? Uh advertising content in place, but there was really like. Of course, it was the first one, first serve. Okay, so anyone could come get it, but you advertise it too. Got it. Well, the interesting thing too, so we know we haven't really seen this packet, is that the free transit is um. For just summer is a hundred and fifteen thousand, but the apartment's only four thousand five hundred, so. It's really. So is the on demand going? That was so exciting. Sorry, I got this way up.
Yes, that one's on the eighty eight.
Eighty eight. Okay.
And that's the agenda. Next meeting.
I have a specific question. The EV charging station that was uh approved this year to be made out of the vendor's tax, same. And does that show up in the new one is ninety two. Or excuse, I never seen it was in the budget, right? For. He he had he keeps wearing the badge.
Yeah, that's it.
Although both the generators to. Are to, you know, it's in the ninety two. I pretty much say I think the water.
So uh well, I I can speak to the distinction between these projects, but as far as how those are allocated, why they're. Okay, but I. We've got a couple here under.
I have a few other questions. Do all capital projects show up? This capital projects, because that's specific on K and L to just next allocation. So I think considering couple of projects.
Um I have to look at the the dollar amounts for whether or not that would be considered capital.
Are you doing what you're doing?
Well, I think the other.
Once the team from Rogers.
Right, so there is there is an out uh remaining C I P, which is in the C I P uh for actually these stations here at the library. That has been delayed uh due to equipment procurement uh challenges. Um and then there's the larger stacks of give a little bit of the retaliation. I don't know about the guys in the C I P or not. Um and we are um because that has been tied to some uh state federal grant funding. Parts and announcements, um working for Sarah um to hopefully have some updates very soon on the progress of that, so.
Uh we just do the questions there. So but thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. So if that show up. Uh what else? Or would I?
For twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four? Is that with the twenty twenty?
It doesn't show up, but it doesn't have where it shows up, doesn't show up each year, so doesn't show up projects.
That would be part of the larger tax fund, but uh the capitalization on that could be different uh when you're looking at. One E V charger, we're putting in five, it depends on the cost of each unit. Um similarly to our our vehicles, um with our police vehicle, those are. Um if purchasing a new vehicle out of police or if you have a priority control officer. Um those would uh those are not called capital, so it just depends on the threshold of each unit. That's being considered under capital as it relates to the budget. Whether or not we capitalize it on accounting standard, different, but um as far as that coming out of there, uh would be part of the larger tax.
I suppose. Um on the. Larger tax for the council determiner, I have basically four hundred twenty three thousand. Eleven percent. And then when I look through these funds, I have the the just quickly, I think I'm totaling projects. And the for with the burning of dividers at one oh seven at three ninety seven. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, yeah. So the plan would be if we didn't use all the funds, so if we did this year. We would have it, we would keep those funds available still in council determination. Can it be fun?
Okay.
Those four always will be created next year to make to have more, probably compatible um at that point.
Great, thank you. Right, Neil. Let's keep going.
So for our grants fund, um this is related to governmental grants. Um this was a fund that was established in order to be able to show and reflect. Um governmental like grants, um so typically with these, um we are showing, for instance, know that will be uh. Included for twenty twenty four. Um council is aware that we do bring multiple grant requests throughout the year to council. This is one of the areas for payment or budget. Uh rather frequently because the grant contract comes available, that's my bring it to council for appropriation. Um so we have what we expect for twenty twenty four to be included on here. Um knowing um that component of it and then that ending fund balances are deferred um revenue, which is the American Rescue Plan Act dollars since we received it. Ahead of time versus on a reverse basis. Any questions on the grants fund? Moving on, so these are some of our smaller funds. Um the road impact fee fund, the conservation trust fund, dark funds for storm fund. Um so for the uh road impact fees, um you can see um some of those areas that we're showing. Um the estimated um and then those ending fund balances for twenty twenty four. Um none of these have any expenditures for consideration in twenty twenty four. Um we will look at areas um as it relates to conservation trust funds or parking open funds, if we can utilize those for. Um any car projects that meet the criteria. Um with the road impact fee funds, um obviously council is aware that the last meeting we did have a preparation for those to cover Florida road. Um so with that trip twenty thirty update that engineering is doing, um that will impact what those road impact fee funds are. As well as what off roads they can utilize to pay for. Any questions on our smaller special revenue funds? So the two thousand five sales tax debt, um so this is the other quarter sent of the O five. Um we have for consideration in twenty twenty four, um the interfront transfer. For uh the library and Florida road and no other expenditures, and again, these revenues follow the same. Projections for sales tax that we're projecting on the sales tax for the general fund, um then showing those community bonuses. Questions? And finally, this is the two uh sales tax uh bond two thousand and seven debt. Um so this is where we receive the funds for the principal payments and interest payments for Colorado road and the library. Questions? All right, so next steps. Um so uh between now and November seventh, um our team is available to answer any questions. Um we're having one on once, um and council would like that if you need any more information about the budget. Um I sounded we have two items that we placed on the next agenda um for council discussion. Um otherwise reconciliation will include any new information that staff um hears between now and then, where this be as working through. Um any of our insurance or risk management or any of those areas, those would be forthcoming. Any private reappropriation that you want to let council know, um last year we came back to you in February, March timeframe. With some reappropriation products, we're doing our best to work with the departments to have those in reconciliation. So that we're not coming back at the beginning of the year with uh with the budget. Um so that is the that's the goal, so that we rely on a share of what council sees in reconciliation. Um after that, uh there's a first hearing, the second can be on the budget, so. Um those will be in the second meeting and November will be the first hearing and then the second hearing and um. The option for the two appropriation or medicals will be December fifth. Um sorry, I read.
So much. Okay, so you mentioned the reconciliation. That's not considered a budget.
Yeah, that's just a presentation. Yeah, it's just a presentation that we go over all the dangers from the budget that we presented to you today, to what will be in the budget when it's spread for.
I have my last question. The uh all that pie chart, that I actually in the beginning.
Pie chart also. Maybe we started with the pie chart.
And this is.
I just want to make sure I understand this specific part of the pension rate. In that pie charts, you show the city lines of the expense for charges services. And in twenty twenty four, the total budget, that amount was a hundred and fifty three thousand. And last year, the amount was eighty eight thousand. I just wanna, there's no mistake there, that is actually increased. With charges services, which we last year, this year's budget, the increase of sixty four million. And you can respond by email, email. I just put that in last year's budget, this budget, that is. Number like three hundred, that's specifically pie chart, that's.
Is there a reason for that? I used to think responding now might be okay, so that way people that are listening, that may come back and listen to this, are like. Oh my gosh, they're doubling their purchases. I feel like we're teaching our departments charging more things now than they used to, so like why not just out of there? Do we even know that that's the correct numbers that council is asking in different amount?
Um yeah, so I would have to, you know, building it, but cats pulled up and happy to respond to that. Um you know, there is. Tony does have a lot of capital projects um included in the budget, so that the, you know, thirty one million.
Sure, it's Tony's fault. Everything's Tony's fault.
Um but I think we could certainly show what the differences between the two are, um and operating fund. Um there's not major increases, I would argue that's primarily capital, but we do have to do a follow up, you know, on that.
Yeah, just.
And then maybe confirm that in a public meeting too, so we're all on the same page and the members were accurately described and that we know where it's coming from, so don't like. What what council thoughts thoughts? Yeah, I didn't follow up on that. Okay, bye. A hard word in this. Okay. Which is there, everybody?
Maybe so.
Hands down. So she.
Made up all the backs, spreading now, man.